Either you all are being very quiet, or my audio is not working, one or the other.
No, I asked everybody to mute themselves for the pledge of allegiance. It gets too confusing when everybody's trying to say it at the same time.
And just a heads up, I have children in the same room playing video games, so I'm hoping that they remain quiet.
Tell them to join us in the pledge, Amy.
They just might, you never know. Looks like we're still waiting for a couple of folks.
Mayor, I had a question.
Yes.
So because we had a special meeting for public safety, do I just include that in my public safety report?
I think that's up to you, but that would be appropriate.
Yeah, I think it all goes together.
Yeah. And it does look like we have everyone here, so I'm going to call the Tuesday, July 6, 2021 Duval City Council Meeting. And Clerk, would you please take the role?
Councilmember Britt Nikki.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer. Oh, he's here, but on mute, sorry, because I asked everybody to mute themselves. Councilmember McHenry.
Here.
Councilmember Remington.
Here.
Councilmember Hoag.
Here.
Councilmember Napland.
Here.
Councilmember Lengel.
Here.
And we're doing this out of order, but I will share the flag now. There it is.
And we have a quorum, correct?
Yes, I'm sorry, we have a quorum.
All right. And with that, would you please all join me for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. Next up, under additions or corrections to the agenda on consent, please add payroll for June 18, 2021, and July 2, 2021, in the amount of $539,521.28, and claims for June 16, 2021 through July 6, 2021, in the amount of $64,962.99. Under new business, Agenda Item 1, please add discussion from the Committee of the Whole. Let me get the exact title here. The Complete Streets Grant Update. And I'm typing this into my agenda, so I don't forget it. So hold on just a moment. And then with that, are there any councilmembers that would like to speak this evening? Councilmember Napland, Remington, and McHenry. All right. Thank you. And with that, do we have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved, McHenry.
Seconded, Mike Remington.
We have a motion by Councilmember McHenry, a second by Mayor Portem Remington. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Councilmember Napland, I'm sorry.
I was waiting for the point where you asked if there were any questions. You went straight from that to voting. And normally, so I had a question about item number seven on the consent agenda, and so.
This was just adoption of the agenda.
Okay, so you will ask after. Actually, we should probably remove something from the consent, don't I? Yeah, I'm thinking that if anyone wants an item removed from the consent agenda, we should probably do it during additions and corrections.
Um, we could. Historically, we've done it under consent, but whatever the body wants to do, that is just fine.
I'll do it anyway. It doesn't really matter to me. I just was worried I might be accidentally in my time to ask, so.
No, this is just approval of the agenda. You can always make amendments to any item on the agenda while it's up for discussion and decision. So if you'd like to now, that would be just fine. But if you'd like to wait, that's fine as well.
So what it is, is I have a question about an item on the consent agenda, so it may or may not need to become a separate item. It could just, I could ask it during the consent, I'm not sure.
Then if it's just a question about an item on the consent agenda, then asking it during the consent agenda after the motion's made is the most appropriate.
Thank you.
No problem. It's been a couple of weeks, hasn't it? So with that, all those in favor of adoption of this evening's agenda, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. First off, do we have a motion? Well, I guess Councilmember Nap, and we will go slightly out of order, so we can get your question answered before we have the motion.
So should I ask my question now?
Yes.
So it's item number seven on the consent agenda on the police station roof. And I know as part of the Capitol facilities evaluation, they were going to review our buildings. And so what I saw is that originally, the inspector said there was a 10-year lifespan remaining on the roof. And then we heard a different story, and now we're replacing the roof. So I'm just trying to understand if we have gone through having any review via that, the project of having our buildings looked at by an independent, not a roofing contractor.
Mr. Lenishevsky.
Good evening, Mayor, Council Steve Lenishevsky. So ARC, our consultant, has not specifically looked at the roof. So that is a no to Councilmember Napland's question. Going over the previous history, the inspection reports that were had, and the leaks that were observed, getting into the ceiling with our staff and the HVAC specialist, you can tell that the roof was bad. We did have a look at it by an independent roofing contractor who did not win or bid. So that is something that is, we considered. There are two dissimilar roofs, the one over the Sallyport, which is part of the whole thing, as well as the one over the main structure. There's a large amount of roof, and it was recommended to come out. It was a pretty basic roof material, so it is a 25-year roof now. So that is a recommendation of staff.
Okay. Yeah, it's just, there's a whole lot of recommendations of things that need to be done on that building. And I think during the budgeting process, the request was that that would be reviewed as part of the Capitol Facility project. So is that Monday going to be reviewed, planned, and confirmed, or before we start seeing more of these come forward to be implemented?
At this time, we are trying to engage ARC when it's appropriate, but the amount of basic services that this building needs in repair, I don't expect them to disagree with anything. We did go over the laundry list with the committee, fireworks committee, and we did differentiate things that we had budgeted and discussed, and then other things that were discovered, and other things that were kind of broken out as, I won't say nice to haves, but need to haves based on why we're in there removing flooring and other things that some things don't come back into the building. The only thing lingering is any sort of gender-specific additions or changes we do that are not part of this current project, and all of its pieces and parts there are, and there is a long laundry list. I think we're up to 20 sort of ticket items to the building. So it sounds like this either can come off, or there's a lot, a little more question than just a little yes or no to leave it or take it off the consent. So that's a few books. But yeah, there's a lot of work to do in 184 is our current estimate. And we tried to differentiate too, like what's actually been quoted, what do we think is in-house, and what is actually bid, and then what is still an estimate. So those are all differentiated on that table.
So the approval is only for the roof, not for proceeding on the rest of the work on it?
Absolutely correct. It's a specific contract with signature roof services for $36,209 and a quarter.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
So do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
Mayor, we have to do the motion to suspend the rules first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm trying to juggle looking at the agenda with also viewing the faces on one screen this evening. So with that, do we have a motion from council to suspend the rules in order to be able to vote on the items on the consent agenda?
I move that we suspend the rules. Michelle Ho.
Councilmember Lengel.
I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second on suspending the rules. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
Move that we approved this evening's consent agenda. Michelle Ho.
Councilmember Lengel.
I second the motion.
Great. We have a motion by Councilmember Hoag, a second by Councilmember Lengel to approve this evening's consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Moving on to comments from the audience, the clerk did receive a comment. So clerk, would you please read that into the record? And then anyone who's on the line that would like to provide public comment will be allowed to do so.
Actually, that comment was received by Allison Law, who is in attendance this evening.
All right, thank you. I didn't see her on the screen. Ms. Law, would you like to speak to your email, or?
Definitely.
All right, thank you. You may go ahead.
Thank you. Mayor Ocklander and City Council members, my name is Allison Law. I live in the city of Snoqualmie. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, my family, as well as another resident living in Snoqualmie. Her name is Bia Wong. Thank you for the opportunity. We have enjoyed living in this friendly Snoqualmie Valley community, and have embraced a peaceful natural setting since 2002. We appreciate the services and leadership that you and your team provide to the community. Being healthy and staying safe has been our primary concern for families and communities since the pandemic started a year and a half ago. As our community is now reopening, we continue to share our practice of mind and body exercises from ancient China to the community for the last 20 years. We believe the practice Falun Dafa would benefit our community even more today. I would like to emphasize that this practice is from ancient China, not communist China. From the practice of Falun Dafa, which is also called Falun Gong, we have received numerous health benefits to ourselves, friends, and family members. We have participated in local Snoqualmie Valley parades and summer festival booths, and have taught the exercises free of charge to the communities to benefit more residents in Snoqualmie Valley. We believe Falun Dafa is a cultural gem that transcends racial, religious, and national boundaries, and would benefit individuals and families. Since its introduction to the public in China, Falun Dafa had been recognized around the world for its health benefits, and has received many awards. Additionally, we have received other proclamations from the local area, including proclamations from Oak Harbor, Snoqualmie two times, including the one just issued three weeks ago, Isacua, and Seattle. Currently, 100 million people in over 100 countries practice Falun Dafa. Unfortunately, since July 1999, Falun Dafa has been persecuted by the Chinese government due to its popularity and its deep roots in ancient Chinese history and culture. Sadly, many practitioners have faced jail sentences, torture, and even death in China. We're very fortunate to be here in this nation, and we love America and enjoy the freedom to practice Falun Dafa here. We are reaching out to you today because we would like to submit a proclamation request recognizing Falun Dafa and its health benefit to people. Your support and recognition of Falun Dafa will enhance a sense of community, promote staying healthy and safe for all people, young and old, living in Snoqualmie Valley. We appreciate your time and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Law. Is there anyone else that would like to provide public comment this evening? All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the mayor's report. And hold on just a moment. All right, so the mayor's report, I'll be relatively brief tonight. First of all, attended the Association of Washington Cities Conference week before last. I am pleased to share that I was reelected to the Board of Directors. So I'm thrilled to be able to serve a two-year term instead of just the one year that I had last year. I've also been appointed to the Employee Benefits Trust Board. That is the group that oversees, was part of AWC, that oversees our healthcare plans, the wellness program, et cetera. So I'm looking forward to that appointment and serving in that fashion as well. For folks that don't know, just this afternoon, the governor has issued a statewide emergency burn ban for the rest of the summer, and declared a state of emergency based on the fire and drought conditions that we were seeing. I think that that was not necessarily surprising, seeing the weather that we've had the last couple of weeks, and being that Duval's in our second or third red flag warning status in just the last two weeks. And I don't recall us ever being in a red flag warning with high fire weather risk to this extent, especially this early in the year. So I'm hoping that members of the public will take heed and follow the guidance without doing any open burning, only using their barbecues, not using their charcoal, and doing what they can to keep our community safe. Last week, we did have an emergency public safety meeting ahead of the emergency fireworks ban. Chair Britt Nikki will give a report on that meeting, but I do want to share that overwhelmingly, the feedback from the community was positive in moving forward with that emergency ban. When we approved that legislation, we knew that chances are that this would happen someday, but we were hoping it would be much more distant in the future than just two years after the ordinance was passed. And the Chief DeBach will be giving a brief update on those activities during the administration update tonight. So with that, the last item I have is a big, huge thank you to everyone on council and all of the staff that attended the official change of command ceremony for retired Chief Kerry Hurt and now our new chief, Mike DeBach. It was a great event, and the weather was perfect. It cooled down just enough to be comfortable outside. And we've received a lot of positive feedback on Chief DeBach swearing in, and having your full support there was definitely much appreciated by all. So thank you for coming. And with that, we'll go ahead and move on to Councilmember Napland.
My mouse was not cooperating. Thanks for that report. And I do have a question about the American Rescue Plan.
Thank you.
And I don't know if you want to speak about it, or if you just want to hear my question on the report that was.
Do you want me to just share with you first and see if that solves the question or adds to it?
Sure.
The agenda item that was on the Committee of the Whole was just simply to discuss potentially using ARPA funds to bring a limited-term employee onboard to manage the programs that we put in place, as well as the reporting and distribution of the ARPA funds for the next two years. This is something that lots of cities are doing or have already done. In looking at our staff capacity while we're implementing an ERP software system, as well as all of the other big items we have going on with capital facilities, et cetera, we just don't have the bandwidth to do it internally. It is an allowable use. So it was simply to get that conversation started, which we can have definitely much more in depth at the next meeting. But I'd definitely be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you. Yeah, my question is, have we considered using a consultant? I just envision there being a pretty significant ebb and flow of the intensity of staffing needs for this to support the reporting and all of those different things. And I imagine similar to how we work with attorneys, because of that ebb and flow, that they're more on a consultant hourly basis as needed. So I'm just wondering if that could be considered as well, instead of an actual employee that would have, you know, a certain hours per week, that an ebb and flow would be less compatible.
Absolutely. And I think that's one of the discussions we've had internally, and especially at mayor's meetings, is the potential of some cities sharing an employee. There's pluses and negatives to having a consultant. There's pluses and negatives to having a limited-term employee. The biggest challenge that we could face with a consultant is having other work come up at the same time, and making it difficult for them to focus on us. I see that as low risk. But at this point, and I haven't done the research yet, I'm not aware of any consulting firms that are specifically doing this work. That's not to say that that's not happening, and that it doesn't exist, but I just am not aware of any. But that's definitely something that can be considered. I think one of the other things to consider as well is whoever, if we were to hire a limited-term employee, that we have a lot of policy work that needs to be done as well. And so there might be an opportunity for a job share of that limited-term employee to get to knock off some of those important policy pieces that we need to get done when the ARPA work is low. So I think we'll have a much broader discussion later at the next meeting. But it's a good point to bring up, and should be part of the discussion that we have as a group at the next meeting.
Thank you. And then I was going to bring this up during, go to the order during the Cal, but I just, I had brought this up during the land use committee meeting. And the last few months, I've visited a lot of different parks, ballparks. And one thing I noticed in the parks that were more enjoyable, especially during the heat wave, is parks that have large trees. And just looking at Big Rock Ballpark, there is no shade anywhere. And, you know, so there are other parks where we lack shade. And just wanting to request that in the future, we consider providing shade as a health benefit. And also, from my research, it extends the life of asphalt.
Yes. Yeah.
As long as it's prepared correctly. But with the increasing heat, the shade not only provides coolness while you're in the shade, but it also cools the area around the tree. So I just, I really want to stress how much more enjoyable the parks were where there was shade. And I hope to do something about that. And also, just looking at other cities have kind of a tree program, potentially where the community could even, you know, get grants to install trees in different areas, or maybe give away trees, or just some different policies like that. And I know when we did the tree code update, that those were some of the goals that were discussed. So I don't know if at some point, there can be a discussion potentially at Public Works Committee. I'm not really sure exactly where it would belong, but it feels important to me, and I think other residents share that desire possibly.
Absolutely. And in regards to shelter at the parks, especially our unsheltered ones, just a reminder that we have budgeted two sunshades to go over play structures, which is really significant for both Judd Park and Big Rock Ballfields. So those will be the first two shade structures that we install. And that is definitely something that we can look at for the mid-vyanium budget updates, because those may be more simple, lower-cost items to install, especially at the ballfields. And as we get more use, I think we all know that artificial turf gets super, super hot, which adds to the issue. And as a sports parent myself, I can say that not having shade even at the elementary schools when you're not on asphalt can be a problem, even in late afternoon with the heat that we're starting to experience. And so that's something that we should be incorporating into our parks and plans in the future. So thank you for bringing that up. And the tree item, yes, we can, I think we can talk about that, especially during the mid-by-budget process, and looking at resources for what it would take to staff a program like that. And if you're willing to put it on the bucket list to bring forward, that would be great. So Councilmember Schaefer?
Yeah, I had a similar concern to Councilmember Napland when I read the, you know, the request for the American Rescue Plans Funds Management Support. I assume a lot of cities are going to be after that type of expertise basically the same time we are. Our chances of getting a well-qualified person are therefore lessened because of the competition in that area. And certainly, if we could find a good qualified consultant that would help, you know, could help us out, that had a high level of expertise, and of course, you know, shared that among multiple cities, but us being one of those, I think we'd probably be ahead of the game to go in that direction. But as you said, Mayor, we'd have to find a consultant that actually has those qualifications.
Yeah. And, you know, just as we're talking about this, I can think of a few people that do have these qualifications that work at firms. The question there is, will the firms allow them to do that type of work?
Yeah.
And so, I think that's definitely well worth looking into.
Good.
Great. All right. And Councilmember Napland, did you have more to share this evening, or was that it?
That's it. And just to stress again, I love, I mean, the shade structures are great, but they honestly don't provide the same amount of cooling as an actual.
No, they don't.
Those little canopy set up to survive, and it actually felt almost hotter underneath it because it.
Yeah.
Magnify the heat when you.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'm a huge fan of trees as a shade solution.
You provide shelter from the rain.
I have some other thoughts of ideas to cool areas as well that we can discuss at a later date. So this is a good conversation to be having, so thank you. All right, Mayor Portem Remington. Mayor Portem, you're on mute.
Thank you. This morning, Councilmember McHenry and Councilmember Napland, and I attended Thrive's grand reopening. It was just nice to see the business back in town, see all the work they did to provide new equipment and paint in childcare area. As I understood, they had some two-week come-in-and-enjoy-the-gym coupons they were handing out. So if our citizens are interested, I'm sure they can contact them and get a chance to try it out. There was a lot of talk about fireworks. I'm bringing it up here not to debate fireworks. The reality is, we don't have a full ban on fireworks, you know, a permanent ban. It was just a temporary for a very good reason, because of the fire danger. I noticed on Facebook, there were several questions about, well, when have we ever had a problem in Duval? What's the issue? You know, and so I just wanted to share some of that information. And this is 2020 statistics from National Fire Protection Association and other agencies that monitor injuries and fatalities. So in 2020, one year ago, there were 18 deaths in the United States, and there were 15,600 people hospitalized with injuries. 50% of those that were injured were young children and young adults under the age of 20. In terms of fire statistics, those lag behind a little bit, but so this is a 2018 statistic from the National Fire Protection Association. There were 19,500 fires, including 1,900 structure fires, 500 vehicle fires that totaled 105 million in direct property damage. So again, I'm not trying to get into a debate on fireworks. I think most of us realize if there was any other product on the market in the United States that had that record, it would immediately be pulled from the market. Now, I also want to recognize those, because we allow fireworks in Duval. I get that folks were disappointed, and I understand that. And so I'm not in any way trying to put that down. I think it's part of what people like doing and celebrating. But I just wanted to be clear that there are dangers. And our intent this year was really to reduce the fire risk, as well as reducing some of those injuries. It was temporary, and I really, our neighborhood was extremely quiet. I could hear a lot of things around us, but I just wanted to say I deeply appreciate citizens that took that to heart and helped reduce that risk of both fiery fire and certainly injuries. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Portem, and Councilmember McHenry.
Thank you. I just have a few things. First, we had a council chat on Monday, June 21st. And it was myself and Councilmember Schaefer, and we did have one resident call in. I know it's been kind of hit or miss with some of them, but I'm still glad we're doing these. We actually had a great conversations about, it was mostly about growth and traffic and, you know, growth as related to infrastructure improvement. So it it was a lot of fun to chat and it's always so casual and just an opportunity to connect better with people who live here. I have scheduled our next, I will send an email about this later, by the way, but I did schedule one more virtual council chat for this month on Thursday, July 22nd from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. Again, it will be virtual. I had an idea for August and I was thinking that maybe I'll take some lawn chairs. And if another council member or two wants to come down to one of the summer stage concerts, maybe I could have a little sign council chat and we could sit on the edge of the concert going on. If people just want to stop by and chat, make us a little more visible. So that's one idea I had, just to have a in person, but in an outdoor space type of way. So yeah, like Mayor Protem Remington said, there there was the Thrive Community Fitness Ribbon Cutting this afternoon, which I went to, and that was amazing. And I just want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for, they've really rallied the businesses and said, hey, let's do some ribbon cuttings. Who's opening back up? Who just wants to celebrate? And other ones that were this week, I believe, are Hillside Academy, Northwest Arts Center, and RE/MAX Northwest Realtors. I was not able to make it to those, but just wanted to recognize it's always exciting, especially after what these businesses have been through in the last year to see some happiness and people gathering again. It's been really great. And then lastly, I just wanted to thank the residents of our area for really holding back this year. I live on the outer edge of the city limits, and so across the street from me is unincorporated King County. And even, so I wasn't sure what to expect, but honestly, it was really quiet over here as well. I think emergency ban or not, I really believe people recognized the fire danger present this year and respected that and just made different plans. I just want to throw out here now that I realized some people may have bought fireworks before the emergency ban was invoked. And I just would be open to exploring the possibility of allowing discharge on New Year's Eve or something like that. As that relates to, you know, having emergency bans potentially in the future, I would hate for people to store these all year long in their garages just to have another really dry year or some emergency next year. So just something I wanted to throw out there now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Henry. I'm not sure that we actually can do that without the year's notice because it does require a year notice for changes to the fireworks laws. We did have a little bit of a discussion about that, and I think that would be, you know, an excellent idea moving forward is potentially amending our ordinance to saying if they're banned during Fourth of July, that we, that that year, that following January, that they're allowed on the on New Year's Eve or something to that effect might be a good kind of medium ground so that folks feel a little more comfortable. And we can have that discussion at the Public Safety Committee as well. Councilmember Schaefer, you got a question?
Not a question, a comment. You know, first of all, I want to thank Amy for organizing these council chat sessions. Our attendance has been a little on the low side, but nonetheless, I think they serve a very important purpose going forward. I think we can, you know, solicit more community participation in these things. And I, you know, I think Amy, I think your idea of, you know, coinciding maybe one, you know, one or two of these with the, you know, the concert is a terrific idea. I like that a lot, especially of the beer gardens close by. So thanks.
Here, here, Councilmember. All right. Well, we'll go ahead and move on to our council committee reports. First up is Finance Administration with Chair Remington.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate council support for the bridge for ongoing contracts. I think that was a huge move for us and important for staff. We're making headway. In fact, we meet again this week on on language on the procurement policy. So a- as we move forward, we'll try to keep other council members updated on on some of the language and things that we have so that we can get some early feedback. My hope is by the end of summer, we can bring the procurement policy to City Council for review and approval. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to the next report for Land Use, Chair Hogue.
Thank you, Mayor. We did have a land use meeting on June 28th. And Councilmember Lingle, Councilmember Napland, Director Thomas, and Acela Chavez were in attendance. Our first item was the Duval Village commercial to firm it. And I won't go into details about that because it is on our agenda tonight. But we did, our city attorney, Mr. Kenny, did join us to answer questions for council. So I know that we'll be talking about that later. The sign code update is something that was discussed, and I know that the sign code update is, was ultimately started to work through the Reed versus the Town of Gilbert case, which has to do with sign content. But it seems like there is some additional sign things that are being brought forward as possibly changing the sign code. And so I'm just kind of thinking that maybe, and I'm going out on a limb here, this is my feeling. I don't know that, I I think the rest of the committee feels uncomfortable bringing forward things other than just Reed versus Town of Gilbert. So I'm kind of thinking that maybe this should go to the council, the committee, the whole, to discuss further before our staff spends a lot of time on additional things for the sign code. It's just my opinion, I I I probably feel like I shouldn't be speaking for the committee because they didn't really say that, but that's kind of my feeling. So but Acela's been doing a great job on bringing forward comparing other cities and with the fence memo that we've been going over, that's something that's, she's been researching other cities and how they handle fences, whether they do permits for putting fences in. And she's, and so that's been a good discussion for us as well, but that's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Hogue. And I do want to make a clarification on, just quickly for council. We've had an application come in for electric charging stations that have like a TV type display, and they're much larger than the ones at the gas station. And so I did ask staff to bring it to Land Use to see if Land Use was interested in looking at that now. And, you know, happy to discuss, you know, with anybody that wants to have a discussion, kind of the 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 theory behind that, but it really is not of an urgent matter. If council wants to take it up now, that's great. If you don't, that's fine too. But it is something that long term needs to be probably on the list to look at and address because we don't have electric vehicle charging stations in the city anymore. The one that we did have is obsolete. So happy to talk about that with more with anybody that wants to. But absolutely, it's not, it was there for discussion, not necessarily to push through immediately. So thank you. All right, moving on to Public Safety with Chair Bird Nicky.
Thank you, Mayor. So we have, I'm sorry, we have a lot to report. We had two meetings this past week. June 29th was our first meeting. In attendance was myself, Councilmember McHenry, and Councilmember Schaefer attended our second meeting. We had ICA Cotton, Mayor Ockelander, Acting Chief DeBach at the time, who is now our chief. So our first item that I want to cover is the emergency fireworks ban discussion that we had in committee. And the mayor provided the update on the current forecasted weather conditions. She was waiting for further discussion with the Fire Chief Burke and city attorney before making her final decision on the city's fireworks ordinance. The committee then recommended further discussion for a special meeting. So as Chair of the committee, I did reach out to Chief Burke to then set a meeting on June 30th, which I will cover those notes after I finish this report. So that happened. And then we covered the IFIT KC Community Representative, the update on that. So informed that the committee that the training video regarding orientation overview of committee members role was reviewed and sent to the community representatives on June 11th. And then community members were given the option to submit additional questions by email, or we will set up a time for in-person virtual question and answer session is what Chief DeBach reported to us. The community members were also given opportunity to attend a virtual training session through Kirkland Police Department. Inform the committee that the IFIT protocol has minor changes that will need to go back to the council. Those were very minor. The modification accounts for WSPs need to include some language related to immigration. Chief DeBach provided the recommended change and the committee approved police recommendation to take modification to council for a quick one-touch approval at our July six council meeting. So police recruitment hiring Officer Pot is progressing well and has moved to the final month of field training program. Recruit Dunkley began his academy training on June 2nd. And then Officer Squire's last day with our department was June 10th. We currently have one lateral applicant in the background and one exceptional entry applicant has completed the background and has been given a conditional offer pending results of a polygraph, psychological exam, and medical screening. Duval Days debrief event went well with no reported issues and the community appeared to really enjoy the event with the roaming stage. Public Works for Water Safety update, Public Works working on a safety signage, which we previously discussed. National Night Out update, National Night Out is set for August 3rd, 2021, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. There's 10 groups so far I have confirmed, and the video was posted on Facebook on June 19th to reach additional groups as part of the HOAs. Let's see, Fire District 45 is participating, pending calls for service, and we are reaching out to local businesses for food and drinks, et cetera. Officer Benjamin has reached out to the mayor council regarding their involvement. We are looking for volunteers and for additional treats to be handed out during the event. So you can contact Officer Benjamin on that. Now, we had to call a special meeting. So in that meeting, that was the Chief Burke had agreed that June 30th, we could all meet. So we did meet on June 30th at 12:00. A special meeting was called and in attendance, we had Mayor Ockelander, Fire Chief Burke, Police Chief DeBach, ICA Ryan Cotton, Council Committee, Schaefer, McHenry, Fred Nicky, and then from Public Works, Sean Tozer. We opened up on our agenda, we had one item on our agenda, which was the discussion regarding an emergency fire ban. And Fire Chief Burke provided the fire risk facts. He explained fully the details of risk as it pertained to our current situation, which was the extended drought, extreme temperatures, fuel moisture that was dropping and that as the trees were pulling their moisture down to their roots, causing a situation that could be pretty volatile. And I I will say, I have in the last three years as a backpacker fled two fires. And it's a very scary situation. It's pretty terrifying. So after listening to his report, we had discussion among the committee members. The chief did recommend a ban for discharging fireworks. So the committee did voice their support for the mayor's message to the community to put forward an emergency fire ban. There were three on the committee that did voice support for that. And that was for the mayor's proclamation enacting an emergency ban on fireworks. It was a very serious, but what I would call a very great collaborative collaborative effort with a real focus on the safety of the citizens. And Councilmember McHenry did suggest an activity with glow sticks, so that was really appreciated. And Mr. Tozer also made suggestions about how we were going to message to the community. The mayor suggested putting up the banner and then Chief DeBach and Chief Burke made plans to meet and coordinate. So it was a very productive meeting. And the final outcome was the support of all agencies and members of the committee to support the mayor's executive order on the emergency ban of discharging fireworks. And I will say that I'm very proud of the community and their effort to keep us all safe. So that's the end of my report. Any questions?
Councilmember Napland?
Yeah, thank you so much for that report. I had, I observed on Facebook that there were a few questions. I think they ended up getting directed to Mayor Ockelander about, were there any citations issued? And in addition to that, I would be curious how many potential calls or complaints were received and just comparing that to previous years. Is that something that a report could come out from the police department?
So as Chief Tabak will actually be providing some of that information under the administration report tonight. He was not listed on the agenda formally because the agenda was obviously developed and on its way out the door prior to this happening. So you'll get that update shortly. And I do just want to echo huge thank you to the Public Safety Committee, especially Councilmember McHenry's idea for the glow sticks. We literally got online during the meeting and found them and our staff had them ordered and delivered by Saturday. So it was a great idea, and I think that it's something that the city can kind of expand upon in the future. And also a huge thank you to Natalie at the Chamber of Commerce, who developed the glow it up Duval logo, which was a lot of fun for folks. And a big thank you to Mayor Portem Remington as well for volunteering time to hand those out on Sunday. So I think that it really turns something that was a downer into a positive for a lot of folks in the community. And that collaborative effort was, I think, really well received. So thank you for that. Councilmember McHenry and then Hogue?
I just wanted to insert really quick. Sean Tozer is amazing. He took, he was the one who kind of brought up that we need to maybe think of some alternative to offer. And I mentioned how I was planning a glow party for my family and he has the ability to take an idea and just run with it and make things happen. So just a huge shout out to Sean Tozer for making all that magic happen.
Councilmember Hogue?
It actually looked like that was planned for months. It was just amazing. So yes, thank you. But I I just really want to say how much I appreciate the mayor and the Public Safety Committee because I knew when we passed the, it was an ordinance, right, for the fireworks years ago, that if it ever came into place where it would have to be used, that it wouldn't be done lightly, that it would be really thought out. And I appreciate everything that you did, Mayor, and everyone else involved.
Thank you. All right, any other questions for Chair Bird Nicky? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Public Works. I'm sorry. Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, hey, Steve, Public Works. And I just wanted to give a huge shout out to Natalie Nelson with the chamber. She actually made that graphic and I don't even think it took 25 minutes. So there's a bottle of wine sitting in my foyer that needs to go to her. She was out of town. Yeah, I called her as a huge favor and she's like, well, I can add to the three things I'm already doing and trying to get out of town in the next 45 minutes. But yeah, let me see what I can do. And she sent three back after talking to Sean. And yeah, it was insane how how quick she did that. And like you said, it's like she had been, you know, just waiting around to do all images. So a big thanks to that.
Thank you. All right, now I think we can move on to Public Works with Chair McHenry.
And that's easy. I actually don't have an update until our next meeting. So thanks.
Perfect. Thank you. And for our ad hoc committees, do we have any updates on council procedures, update and code of conduct or human services grant policy? Councilmember Hogue?
Procedures meeting is next Monday at 12:30.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to administration update with our interim city. With our interim city administrator Ryan Cotton and our deputy city administrator Ms. Laura Thomas. And if if it's okay with you folks, I'm going to ask that Chief DeBach gets to go first. He is working. The street shifts this week. And so he's got to be back at work bright and early tomorrow morning. So is that okay with the two of you? All right. Chief DeBach, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to let you know that my camera is having difficulties. Good evening, Mayor, members of councils, city staff, and you members in attendance. I'm Chief DeBach with the Duval Police Department. I'm here to provide you with an update to the Fourth of July fireworks ban. On June twenty-eighth, the Fire Chief met with, made the recommendation of Mayor Okerlander to ban fireworks within the city limits of Duval. In order to issue a ban, there had to be a high confidence that the weather and fire conditions would not become diminished prior to the Fourth of July. This meant continuing to watch the conditions and coordinating with Fire District forty-five over a two-day period to gather necessary documentation to legally justify the ban. On June thirtieth, the Public Safety Committee with Mayor, Fire Chief, Deputy Fire Chief and myself met publicly to discuss the current fire risk. And the forecast for the weekend. At the meeting, it was confirmed by the Fire Chief that the conditions would continue to deteriorate up to and beyond the Fourth of July. It was the recommendation of the committee to issue the ban based on this information. Emergency order was. Emergency ban order was issued on the evening of June thirtieth and publicly announced on June, July first. The challenge was educating our public in a very short timeframe of the emergency ban. This was done via banner on Main Street, announcements on social media, email communication with the HOAs within the city. As well as in-person education by both the Fire District and the Police Department. We worked with Fire District forty-five and City Council to set up and man a glow stick distribution center on July fourth from five P M till approximately seven thirty P M. Councilmember Remington and members of the Police and Fire Department handed out bracelets and glow sticks to the public and provided information on the ban. The Police Department received a total of nine calls for service between June thirtieth and July fifth regarding fireworks. Seven of these calls occurred on on the fourth and during the early morning hours of the fifth. Officers also enviewed several additional incidents where residents were in the process of lighting fireworks. The Police Department took an approach of education first on these calls and did not issue citations. There were no repeated calls to the same area, which indicated the in-person visits and education was successful. At least two groups that we contacted were unaware of the ban. Officers did patrol the city, visiting neighborhoods and gatherings and educated the public about the ban and rationale behind it. During these contacts, officers did not locate or confiscate any illegal fireworks. Some of the firework complaints the officers received while on patrol were involving people in unincorporated King County lighting fireworks just outside our city limits. And they were legal at that time. Fire District forty-five did report no fires or injuries related to fireworks within the city limits on the Fourth of July. That's all I have there.
Thank you, Chief DeBach. Does anyone have any questions for the police chief? Okay, seeing none. I just will will note that in the future, this is the first time that we have done an emergency ban. Based on conditions, it probably won't be the last. And with the short timeline with education. You know, it really, the the Police Department really had to make judgment calls on when and how to issue citations. And I think to Chief DeBach's point, the fact that there weren't repeat calls after they talked to folks is a good indicator. That they didn't have to pull out the big stick and that people were, for the most part, respectful. I do also want to recognize that a lot of people do not call the police when when they see fireworks. And they just let it go. And we just, they can't enforce on those that are blatant. Unless they get the calls from folks and catch them. Enforcing fireworks bans is one of the most difficult. Difficult things for a police department to do because in Washington state, they literally have to be caught in the act to be able to prove that they've done. That they've broken the law. So I think that for our first ban on short notice, that it it went relatively well. And I thank the Police Department for all the running around that they did, visiting folks and doing the best they could to educate. Folks on the Fourth of July after such short notice. So thank you, Chief DeBach. All right. And moving on, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to add my appreciation to everyone that was involved. And as well as the Fire Department and the Fire Chief and his deputy for making themselves available and supportive. And in giving us a lot of facts that I learned a lot about. So I want to, in my visits with council members, as I I asked what kinds of things you were interested in. In terms of the recruitment for the city administrator, a number of questions came up about some of the projects. That relate to some of the things I've been working on as assigned by the mayor. So I have six items I want to update you on briefly. And and give you some insight as to where they stand and what direction they're going. And I can answer questions now or or, you know, do by way of email later. So I'm going to share my screen. So this is the format that Deputy Director Thomas has come up with. And the six items. Are the administrative leave policy. I'm going to explain that financial plan research, ad hoc committee on comparable. I'm not sure. Are you able to see that comparable communities in terms of compensation? Possible retreat agenda items, possible retreat date, and also department head hiring process going forward. So the administrative leave policy, you might recall the auditors expressed a concern that there is not. A clear understanding as to when administrative leave was offered and how much. And there was a difference between positions. So that was, that was well taken. So that is being, has been revised. It's going to come to you in the form of an ordinance for consistent limits. As well as a consistent process that relates to position, no carryover, no cash value, maximum sixty hours and maximum carryover forty. So those are just some parameters that did not exist previously. It was not misused or abused. Don't get me wrong. But it's, we're happier when the auditors are happier. So that's coming forward to you. Probably at the next meeting in the form of a draft ordinance in first touch. Next item is financial plan and that's coming to you at your next council meeting as well in the way of a report. I will just say that I'm still in on the quest for a model RFQ that has been used in Washington for this kind of thing. Been in contact with MSRC, not yet found that, but I do have a template that I can follow if I have to start from scratch. And then I wanted to talk about what your goals are. And I've discerned some of this from the April twentieth meeting when there was a presentation a little bit from some council discussion. But but nothing to really clarify. A long range to me is seven to ten years. The GFOA, if we do this right, we can compete for the distinguished budget award. This is something I've wanting to do. I think it's a good idea to do, especially as you look at potential new debt or funding. But coordinate that with other taxing units in the county that relate to Duval's taxpayers. And that would allow some coordinated capital funding strategies. The facility plan includes, will include some of that as the your utility plans. But I think it's helpful when there is some cross pollination. So I want to make sure that gets built in. And then, of course, prepare for the levy lift, which I understand is going to sunset in twenty twenty-five. I mean, just to kind of pause for a second, especially Councilmember Lengel, who has given me some additional resources to look at and work on. I'm partly through there. I haven't, I haven't explored all the depths of what you've sent me. But is there any key goal I'm missing on what this financial plan process should entail and end up being? Hearing that, I'll continue. So the next is comparable compensation ad hoc committee. And there's three council members. Signed to that committee, I believe by the authority of the mayor. And there's a number of variables that need to go into determining which eight communities. That's what the union contract requires that there be eight comparable communities that, at least at a minimum, related to the Teamsters positions. I personally think there might be more than that, but working through that, we need to involve the Teamsters. We need to understand the impact of pay on on retention or other communities wanting to poach. We need to look at comparable communities by population tax base, sales tax geography, et cetera, and establish some kind of consensus. How do we do that? I think there's some strong thoughts on a lot of different points of view, certainly expressed in this group of stakeholders. So it's going to be a recommendation that I'll be making to the committee that that will be, you know, based on my experience. And knowledge and research, yet then involving the consultant with their national knowledge and research as well as the Teamsters. As well as the committee as part of a kickoff. Everyone can take it under advisement. No hard feelings on my end. But eventually consultant will come back and review and and probably change what I've provided. And advise the committee and the committee might change that versus Teamsters will be involved at every step. So that's the process that I'm intending to follow, trying to be fair to all concerned and also build in all the knowledge and wisdom that we can muster. If I can confuse anyone, does everyone know what I'm talking about? If not, I'll back up and explain further. Of course, there's a greater compensation study that involves many, many more positions. And that's not as complicated. This this addresses the expectation of the union. That we agreed to in in the new contract. So the fourth and fifth ones are related and that's possible retreat agenda items and possible retreat dates. I think Councilmember Schaefer first brought this up at a meeting I remember attending. And it's something that I'm using in my thought process to accomplish a couple of goals. I think it was talked about that the era priorities. It'd be a good, good, good place to air those ideas. I think it also would be a good place to review the mission and vision, which are a couple of years old. Talk about long-term visioning. I've mentioned the strategic plan, see if we're on the same page as to what that might be and when to kick it off. There's some fine tuning for government related to governance. The ad hoc committee on council policy is doing a lot of that. Maybe it will all be done by this point, but if not, there can be an opportunity to touch base. And also something that you've heard me talk about, a work styles assessment discussion. That's the Colby process and it's intended to align, make sure that the person, I should say, hired for this administrator. As well aligned with both the council as a team and the department heads as a team in a way that will produce a greater good. That's going to take some time. It might involve a facilitator. I'll be working with mayor. Have received two proposals. I'll be working with Mayor Okerlander on on which one we select and how we go forward. If you want to build that into your retreat agenda. If not, we'll we'll do something a little different. Possible retreat dates. It could be a three-hour, could be a Friday evening followed by a Saturday morning. It could be in or out of the city. And could be inclusive of this this Colby work style facilitation, which would not dominate but would add value. Could be late August, be mid-September. And it would relate to the new administrator starting and ramp up and pave the way for some great outcomes going forward. I'll stop there and see if 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 anyone wants to suggest or change anything. Everyone must be on mute because I don't hear a thing on my end.
Councilmember Lengel's hand is up.
Yeah, I hope I'm not going back too far. Just a point of clarification and something you said about the compensation study. I noticed in the consultant's proposal, they're looking at the eight. Did I understand you correctly that you thought there might be some other cities in addition to the eight? Or did I misunderstand that portion of your?
I I can stand corrected if if the finance director is listening, but eight is their Teamster requirement, the union requirement. I I I'm not sure that every Teamster position makes sense in terms of the comparable communities. If you're looking at finance directors, for example, but I shouldn't use her as an example. She's not trying to have any outcome achieved here. But I just, I just think we might have to to cast wider when we're trying to compare like positions and like communities for some, some of those positions.
I would agree with that. Sorry. I would agree with that. And then. Let's see, under the the retreat idea. I I'd like to put in a plug about the the work styles assessment discussion. I think that really would be helpful to us were in a time of a lot of transition. So the more that we understand work styles and how that would integrate with a new administrator, I think that would help our success. So I just was putting in a plug for that and I thank you for recommending it.
All right, well, if I don't hear any objections to late August or mid-September, at some point you'll get some emails trying to set on a date. If Friday evening is too much of a commitment, I see Amy's hand is up.
Sorry, for those of us who have kids, I'm just, the sooner the better to try and get a date because September potentially with kids and sports. And it could be a little harder to pin down a date, but then I don't know if people have vacations in August. So it would be nice to just start looking at dates pretty soon to make sure we can nail something down where we can all attend.
Councilmember Napland.
I I might prefer a September date, but that's just me. I can, I can probably make either work. But yeah, with the kids still out of school and I'm sure vacation timing, once school starts, I'm usually in town. So that might be a little bit easier for me. I don't know if we'd be meeting in person or by Zoom. If it was by Zoom, then potentially there'd be more flexibility. But that's just me and others may have different, different needs.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we have our work cut out for us on that. Number six, department head hiring process. No rocket science here, but we used a pretty exhaustive process to. Make sure we were doing due diligence on Chief DeBach's hire. And similar, I will, I will go through all this, but a similar policy is being written in terms of all department heads. Of course, it varies whether it's an internal or external hire, but it involves three hundred and sixty degree stakeholder input. And also an understanding that the probation, other evaluation processes couldn't include three hundred and sixty degree stakeholder input as well. So that's it for me. Any more council feedback?
I'm not seeing any, Mr. Cotton. So I think we're good to go.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Thomas, did you have anything this evening?
I just have two quick items and I, there's not a presentation to go along with it. Just as a general reminder, July twenty-first, we're having a joint planning commission city council workshop at six P M. I sent the notice out last week. So if you haven't responded, please do so. And then just some significant news as well. We met with the mayor today and emergency management. And we're beginning the phase one reopening of city hall, which we anticipate taking place as early as July fifteenth. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you for picking up on what I missed. All right. So we'll go ahead and move on to our presentation this evening. And it's a Duval Open Space Multi-Use Trail Project with Spencer Powers and Spencer Darrington for the Riders of Rona. And this is another, for council, before we get going, this is another idea and concept for expanding our parks in the community. And just to let you folks and council know that I've already had the discussion with the group. That we are looking, will be looking at more of these parts, projects in the mid-by-year-end budget process. And potentially prioritizing, because we've had so many great ideas come forward. We're going to need to do this, but I think you'll enjoy the presentation. And I think in general, there are more ideas. Great ideas for improvements than we can handle. And that's a good problem to have. So with that, Spencer and Spencer, please take it away.
Thank you. Am I coming across okay? That's the first question. All right, awesome. Honorable Mayor. Councilmembers, thanks for the invite tonight. It's been really enjoyable just listening in on the city government as it works. So thank you very much for giving us a little bit of time. I'm going to take a moment and just get my screen share going here. Let's see. I'll tell you what, it is always interesting depending on whose. Whose system you're using. whose system you're using. Here we go, I think I've got it. All right, Duval Open Space, let's talk about an opportunity to create an awesome multi-use trail system that can be enjoyed by the community. First of all, who are we? I'd like to introduce my partners in crime for this evening. So Spencer Fowers is on the call as well as Brian Wheeler. And we are three of a group of 17 local Duvalians who call ourselves the Riders of Rona. And we came together during the coronavirus and began to ride mountain bikes quite vigorously. We love this community. We're very active. Many of us have coached, you know, teams in the past and we ride its local trails two to three times easily per week. So we have done a little bit of work in DOS. We got a little bit ahead of ourselves, not understanding all things about city policy and such. And so we're here to kind of to be a bit more formal about that and come in the front door. But we've probably donated already about 80 plus hours of work on the current DOS trail. And we did kind of wear our jerseys today, so sort of flip down. So we're not informally dressed. We just want to show you our enthusiasm, which is quite strong. Yes, very much so. So we think Duval Open Space has awesome potentials. This is a great untapped resource for hiking and biking, and we think it can be an awesome recreation area that could benefit the city for for years to come. And really, our our goal is enthusiasts is to work with the city on a joint plan to create us a network of multi-use trails that can be both safe and can also help and preserve the, can be kind on the ecology as well. And as local volunteers, we can provide all the labor if necessary to do so. So if you have not been up to speed much on the mountain biking community, it is really exploding. In particularly with COVID, it has drawn a lot of enthusiasm to to the sport. And already just surrounding us, we have three, even four great networks of trails that are within, you know, 15 to 20 minutes of the Duval area. The one being the most popular for most Duvalians is the Cherry Valley Network. But of course, we've got Moss Lake and Tolt McDonald as well. And the thing that's really cool about these trail networks is they're all entirely community organized. And all the maintenance and upkeep is done by the hiking and biking enthusiasts that use these trails. And so that is something that kind of bodes well for, we think, use of DOS for for multi-use trails. The interest of mountain biking is also increasing locally. If you're not aware, Cedar Crest has a mountain bike club, almost 200 Facebook followers for that mountain bike club. And also in the state of Washington, the largest nonprofit organization that has been organized around mountain biking is called the Evergreen Mountain Bike Alliance. And these are professional trail builders and they are well financed by both the state. So they actually get funds from the state, but they also do a lot of fundraising. They raised over $100,000 in their last fund drive. And they have thousands and thousands of members on on Facebook that are are part of this community. And a little bit more on Evergreen and what makes them, why I brought them up is they, they are a nonprofit. They're responsible for some of the best mountain biking in Washington and dare I say, outside of even the state of Washington. And Tiger Mountain and Raging River. And they are professionals at building trails. They partner with cities. They train local volunteers like us. And they really have an emphasis on doing it in such a way that is very sustainable and protects the ecology. And the good news is, is they have offered to train our group, the Riders of Rona, on how to do sustainable trail building. We've actually had Bob Ornecu is actually a local Duvalian, who is a professional trail builder who's already reached out to us. And we're trying to set up some time to go build some trails on Moss to learn how he does his system. And we'd like to provide a little bit of inspiration for DOS, some of the things that we think are possible. So this is just some open thinking, nothing too formal, and I'll I'll turn it over to Spencer Fowers to to do that.
Makes sense. Everybody can hear me okay, right? Let me know if you can't. So actually, looking at some of the old original city plans, there was initial ideas for putting a trail system through DOS, which was some of the inspiration that we had for coming into DOS and saying, can we put a trail network into this? Then go ahead to the next slide. So this is kind of our idea for what you might envision like a trail network system that would go inside of the Duval Open Space. Down here in the red, there's an old logging road that's actually existing logging road in place. And then the small piece of trails that that we already built right there at the beginning of the entrance through all open space. And that's coming into the entrance from the North Hill community. The next, you can imagine an easy trail running along the ridge. We'd have a long ridge trail that would go from the top end, the North Hill end to the bottom of Taylor's Ridge by the Alvin Miller Park entrance by the pump station. And then with that upper trail, we have, can add intermediate trails that drop down into the kind of the main valley area to have sort of a central collection point at the bottom to allow people to do multiple rides, pick different locations and get some, get some good exercise out in the outdoors. And then finally, some easier hiking and walking trails downward, the elevation levels out a little bit more towards the bottom end of Taylor's Ridge. So our, our proposal is that we would break this up into multiple phases. The first phase being kind of this main loop, we'd call it like a super loop, basically clearing out the old logging road that already exists as an easy entrance and exit path. And then making a lower trail and an upper trail that goes through the the southern piece portion of the ball open space, connecting that to the northern portion of Duval Open Space to give people basically an entire loop that can be, can be completed as phase one. And then phase two, we'd add in some of these steeper trails that'd be more multi-use, really beneficial for mountain bikers and people that want a little more elevation gain with their hiking. And then phase three would be adding in easier, less elevation gain, more flat trails towards the Alvin Miller Park area. And you certainly have a, the planning committee actually already has an intern Mason Mallard. He went up with us using GPS and mapped out the existing area that we have a trail in the red part there. And then went ahead and outlined some potential initial trail points as well, using these lidar map that we already have of the area. Just kind of give you an idea of the flavor of some of the trails we can have and what that area looks like from an elevation perspective. Oh, and I'll let Spence take back over. He talks a little about Evergreen here.
All right, am I, am I on mute? Okay, I can't see where my controls are. So again, Evergreen is a, is a fantastic resource for us and they weren't able to join us here tonight, but they did give us some talking points that we could talk to on the, on their behalf. So again, already mentioned, they are willing to provide expert guidance as expert trail builders in the region to help train us, the Riders of Rona, on how to do the building. They also have resources to do lidar mapping. They've got some paid project managers that can help with that. And that really is all about that, how do you identify sensitive areas and avoid building in in places that aren't going to be sustainable? Another thing they that they do that is really exciting is there are federal grant programs that they've been able to tap into for Washington State. It's called a recreational trails program or RTP. And they would like, once we complete the trail system in DOS, if that is something that everyone decides we want to do, they would make that within their system eligible for state funds. And that would fund periodically pay trail builders to come in. It could pay for equipment as well as trail work parties. Now, that's not to say that, that the full burden we would rely on then to take care of that. We would do that as local volunteers, but we would have access to those additional resources and more professional resources to help us with our efforts. And then, and then help with memorandums of memorandum of understanding or MOUs. And so this is something that these guys do very well. They've done several of these, as you can see, Japanese Gulch is one that was done with buckletio with King County, Dothe Hill Bike Park and as well as Campbell Global. If you know the local area that's out by not north bend, fall city. And so they've got a lot of experience constructing these agreements with local cities. Spencer.
Sorry, I was on mute. Yeah, so some of the things that we wanted to talk about, there's obviously some concerns that come up when we talk about building biking trails. One of those is injury liability. I actually grabbed the current signage that's been adopted by the Washington Department of Agri, or Department of Natural Resources. This is what's used on all the major trail systems in the state of Washington that's owned by DNR. It's very specific about the trail information and also mentions the right at your own risk idea. The concept on all trail systems is this right at your own risk. And while we don't plan to have any type of, I should say, features similar to Dothe Hill that would maybe cause concern, any risks in our trail system would be comparable or less than that of like a local skate park. And also like the Evergreen MTV Alliance, you know, these expert trail builders, they do a really good job of being able to understand because they've been doing this so long, the local ecology in the Washington area, especially the Pacific Northwest, and how we can preserve the existing ecology, utilize existing dropped logs and things like that to be able to enhance the trails, make them more enjoyable, but also make them very sustainable.
One thing I'll just add there is we've, we've already had a couple meetings with Mr. Lenishewski and Ms. Thomas on talking about how we can build sustainably and and why we haven't codified anything. You know, we we have sort of a general discussion about what would be acceptable and unacceptable practices in the area. And I think we're, there's some good understanding about what's possible there to do it well and and have it be win-win.
And then another concern that comes up is parking. One of the, the other areas, as Spencer mentioned, was Cherry Creek Falls, which is has seen a lot of traffic in the past, as we've seen, especially with the, when they ease restrictions on visiting state lands. Cherry Creek Falls has the benefit that it sort of has a pot of gold at the end of the rainbow. People go there so they can go see a waterfall or some feature, whereas DOS does not really have any major sightseeing benefit. So there's not something that's going to attract large crowds just to go on a hike outside of this, outside of our community. This is seen as more of a local community feature, trails that the local citizens of Duval and the neighboring communities would want to use. And expect to have, if you go and take a quick survey of most of these mountain biking areas near us and count the number of cars it has, have bike racks, you only see about three to five cars at any one time there.
And that's a busy day, by the way.
Right. And then, of course, you know, we, we don't want to upset any neighbors. There's always that possibility because we are at a lot of people's backyards. So we plan to make a lot of concessions to bring these trails low enough down into the the elevation change that we are away from backyards and ensure the privacy of the, the neighbors who border up to that open space. And finally, as Spence has mentioned, especially with Evergreen Mountain Bike Alliance and also with our local group, the Riders of Rona, we all of the trail systems that exist already in the area are maintained by local enthusiasts. There's no governing body that requires any type of maintenance. It's just done by the, by the men and women that hike and ride these trails on a daily basis. And we plan the same type of maintenance schedule with the system. So some of the initial enhancements that we want to do or that we would propose, and these are all optional things that we're talking about with the Duval Open Space, as we said before, this is an entirely volunteer led thing and we plan to do the work ourselves. But with any additional resources that the city would be interested in providing, we can do things like adding city branded signs at the trailheads, trash receptacles at the entrances, just to make sure that waste is manageable, entrances and exits. And if there were any rare instances, like the other big storm and large trees get blown across trails, large debris removal where we might have to take those trees and and chip out pieces of them. And also with additional funding, we, it would be interesting, we feel like kind of a nice addition to add skill building features down in the central collection point. You can imagine small wood features and things where even pump tracks or, you know, we like to bring our kids to the ones that they have in existence. They just ride around and get some exercise. And one other additional thing that could be useful is if we get access to some raw materials for armoring trails. Doesn't need to happen during initial trail building that those trails get built with the materials that exist there. But if we find there's a piece of a trail that gets washed out easily or that needs some additional strengthening, you know, a load of crushed rock or something can allow us to really armor that trail and make it a lot sturdier to handle additional traffic. And one of the things that we really like about this idea is it's come out multiple times as we presented this. It's a great opportunity for local scout troops and even the local mountain biking club to be able to volunteer and create projects. I just did, I just did a bike ride a couple of days ago down a Black Diamond Open Space. And it's amazing, I couldn't even count how many benches and pull-up bars and features had, you know, Eagle Scout project plaques on them for, so it's a great opportunity for, you know, the youth of the area to be able to find volunteer opportunities.
Yeah, I will just mention on that youth, we just had our first youth, he's a high schooler that's on the mountain bike club that just joined, the Riders of Rona. And he's already smoking all of us old guys. And so it's, it's just exciting to see kids out riding bikes again. This is something we all grew up with and we're just loving having him in the group. Yeah, we want to say thank you and and we'd love to partner with the city on what we think could be an incredible project. And we, yeah, we'd love to hear any, any questions you may have.
Well, thank you for coming and presenting. I see Councilmember Schaefer has his hand up first.
Okay, first of all, I want to, I want to say I'm a huge supporting of the sport of mountain biking. I've done it for many, many years myself, more so in my younger, younger past. But it's, it's a terrific sport to teach one, not only physical endurance, but mental endurance, as you guys know as well. Kids absolutely love it. Most kid bikes these days are mountain bikes of some sort or or other. And I absolutely believe it is a terrific sport for kids of all, of all ages. Not only as a teacher of mountain biking, but teaches them love of nature, getting out of the city, experiencing more of the beautiful natural environment that we, we have around us. I've actually lived in Duval about three and a half years, but, but coming from Colorado, where mountain bike trails and hiking trails are numerous and easily accessible and almost ubiquitous everywhere. Coming here, I was actually a bit frustrated by lack of access into these natural areas. Walking, walking around and specifically the area that you showed on your map. To my knowledge, there's no trails, period, in there right now. Or if there is, they're, you know, not well known certainly. And opening up some trails, not only for mountain bikers, but for hikers in that area, I think is a terrific idea. I'd absolutely love to see that, that happen, that meets, you know, certainly meets my, you know, some of my personal desires. Not only for myself and others in the community, but yeah, maybe we want to attract a lot of out of town people to that. But you know what? I I like the idea of anything that has potential to attract, attract out of town people just to, you know, visit Duval and contribute to the economy here. And this certainly has that, has that potential as well. One of the things, and I, I know you've talked about this with, with Steve and and the mayor and others. But one of the things we'd have to understand is what the, you know, the the financial budgetary responsibility of the city is related to this. I know, as you said, it'd be maintained by volunteers. And I know that's been very successful in many areas and I appreciate that. But nonetheless, there's probably are some cities cost. You mentioned signage, maybe some other costs there to the, to the city. And that's one thing I'd like to get a better understanding of. But appreciate your ideas and I certainly, I certainly welcome, welcome the ideas.
Awesome, yeah, on the, on the cost, you know, we agree, we, we think we can do it. If you look at Cherry Creek Falls, the budget is zero. And that's, that's for a pretty good trail network. And if the city so chose to invest a little bit in that, I, we think it's a minimal investment at best. It would be the hope.
Okay, okay.
Councilmember Rednicky and then Napland.
So I, that would be my dream if you build that super loop. Because I love mountain biking and I, I'm familiar with Moss Lake. And I do a lot of riding out by Stossel. So I'm just trying to envision where the trail is going to be. And, you know, with Moss Lake, there's just a lot of volunteer happening out there. I mean, it's all volunteer built. And so is that kind of what you're envisioning? What the same sort of development for the trail system?
Yeah, when we got a little overly enthusiastic, we built about 2,000 feet of trails in six weeks. So, you know, we just said, well, instead of going to Duval Fitness, we're now Thrive. Well, instead of spending a day at Thrive, we'll spend it on the trail. And a lot of us have kids and we bring our kids, we want our kids outside and not inside all the time. And it's, it's great. And we, we haven't even really recruited other volunteers yet, to be honest. We think there's more potential.
Yeah, well, I, I think it's a great idea. It would be my dream to do that. And then we wouldn't have to go drive far away to go get to a trail.
And Councilmember Napland and then Mr. Lenishewski.
Did Dr. Lenishewski have some, a comment?
Did Dr. Lyshevsky have some, a comment related to what? Councilmember Bernicki was talking about?
I was just gonna, yes, I did. Thank you. One of the Spencers or Brian could just flip maybe to a quick picture that's been taken recently of, of kind of some of the trail. You know, it's natural bedding, fibrous materials, not a lot of heavy excavation, that kind of stuff that might help people visualize. I know there's, as we learn and grow as people, it's visual, audible learners, all kinds of people.
I'll see.
That could help some of them.
Brian or Spencer, will you guys search up a picture maybe?
While he's doing that.
Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say while he's doing that, Councilmember Napland, you had a question or a comment?
Yeah, I, I just want to say that a community partnership to get projects like this done is nothing thrilled anymore. I love the enthusiasm. This is our town, our, this is a shared property and I love to see it put to use and enjoy. So, yeah, I'm really excited about this idea. The, the one question I have is. Maybe some examples of how trail sharing works with hikers for the safety of, you know, a mom or dad with their little kid. I, I saw on one of your graphics when it was describing the trail, it said hikers yield to bicycles. And that bicycles have the right of way, I think on one of them and. So yeah, I don't know if different trails might have different rules. I would just want to make sure a bike isn't coming off a jump and there's a kid. You know, a blind corner. So how that works and potentially, you know, different rules for the shared. Trails versus like a Doofy Hill, you know, that. I don't know, actually do hikers go on Doofy Hill? I, I was thinking it was.
Hikers won't tackle Doofy, but there are members of several Facebook groups and Tiger Mountain, sometimes you will have. Hikers try to attend the most difficult mountain biking trails where people are moving quickly on those trails. And the way they've tackled that is with just really blatant signage. You know, that, that states, hey, this is a multi-use trail. There could be people coming down and you really just have to make it big and bold. And in people's faces. And, and I think if you look at the way that's laid out, some of that multi-use will be a little steeper. And that's why you will really want to put up the signage there because it's not going to be as hiker friendly, I would say, where elevation drops significantly. And those flatter areas, that's definitely where the, you know, the hikers, I think really are gonna, we need to give them that, that extra preference, if you will.
Hey, Spence, let me, let me weigh in here. So, uh, Councilmember Napland, almost like universally. Except in very worst circumstances, like bikers yield to everyone in every trail system that like I'm familiar with. With the exception of specifically very steep downhill trails for bikes. Now that said, laws of physics will always trump the, the laws of humankind. You know, I've got four relatively young kids, so I'm, you know, I think about this stuff a lot. And so, and you know, I've seen some communities go to as great a lengths as like. Even days are for bikes and odd days are for hikers if it really gets to be a problem. I doubt we'll ever be at that level of congestion on our trails that we'd need to do something like that, but. The other thing that Evergreen helps do with, in terms of trail building too, is making sure that you have. Proper sight lines where you're not, you know, going fast around a corner and, you know, running into, you know, a kid who's tying a shoe or, or whatever it may be.
Thanks. That, that's actually very helpful. And then the other. Just request would be that there would be significant engagement with those neighborhoods. There's North Hill, Legacy Ridge, Taylor's Ridge. They're all surrounding that, just to make sure there's some engagement along the process with their HOA.
Spencer's on the HOA for, for Taylor's, so we've got one there.
Okay, yeah, I'm thrilled with this idea. It's great.
And Councilmember Napland, just of note too, if you go up to the Paradise Valley Conservation Area. For Snohomish County Parks, those are multi-use trails where some of them are just hiking, some of them are horses. And some of them are multi-use with bikes, horses and hikers. So there's a really good opportunity to kind of explore and see how it all. Plays in together. Councilmember McHenry and then Councilmember Bernicki.
So first off, I just want to say I love this idea. My kids like to bike. And I think they're finally getting that skill level where they're going to be looking for more challenges soon. I think I'm glad you brought up, even though they're not likely to be issues, like you were talking about parking and other things, I'm still glad that the conversation will be had. Because you just never know, honestly. The one other thing I don't think you addressed, but, or maybe you didn't, I missed it. If there is, and I'm wondering how other parks deal with this, if there is a really bad injury by a biker on a trail. In terms of access for, you know, firefighters or rescue, like how does that typically work? I'm not, I'm not a mountain biker myself yet. I, I might have to be with my kids, but I was just curious how you. Think about that with creating these trails in terms of maybe trail width.
That is a good question where I feel like I would kind of come back to the city and say, you know, the, the nice thing about. Develop open spaces, we're not talking miles and miles and miles of trails. So. No one is going to be more than, you know, a mile and a half. I would say less, more than a half a mile from, you know, a house or some form of civilization or an ability to get out. You may be able to ride within the network and get five miles. You know, within the network itself, but I would say at no point are you going to be really super far away where someone can't get to you. And, you know, in a short period of time. And that's maybe one advantage of it being a little bit smaller, but I don't know. Brian, would you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, you know, I, I, look, I mean, I, I, I'm going to avoid the temptation to make something up on the fly here. And I think we should talk to the folks at like Doofy. Now, the, the big difference between this, this trail setup and something like a Doofy is. Doofy has a lot of man-made jumps that are very big and very scary. You know, they terrify me. And, you know, people, people there get hurt. The county has developed some effective responses and, you know. There's specific equipment that they have to get back there on trails. We, we, we do not intend to do anything like they're doing at Doofy though. You know, this is. Yeah, so I, I, Council, Councilmember, I think it's something we can go and research.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think it'd be a good conversation to have with Fire District 45, just. Not even people getting injured from their bike, but someone having, you know, heat exhaustion or a medical emergency. I just.
Getting lost, kid getting lost.
So if, if there is a call, I just want to make sure that that conversation is had with them to know if. If even just having an extra foot wide on a trail makes the difference between, you know, getting to somebody in time and not.
If I could add to that also, one of the benefit, the initial plan for that, that upper trail is to make that one definitely wider. So it's more accessible for, you know, all types of access. We also have the benefit with the Duval Open Space that there are some existing former logging roads, some skid steer roads. One of the main entrances Ian is actually a completely car width road that is still, you know, road based. Making it easier for emergency vehicles to get down there if necessary.
Thank you. Councilmember Bernicki, you had your hand up?
So in regards to. The watershed is on Redmond Ridge area. The watershed is a trail that has biking, horses and people all on the same trail. So it's really close by. You could go check that out to see how that feels and looks as a, a smaller biking trail in a neighborhood. But I will say that, you know, as a biker myself, when we're on the trails with hikers, we're very aware, we're really aware of that. And I've never, I've been on trails with hikers, never had an issue. And in regards to safety, which I've gone off a cliff. Where there was no, there wasn't any emergency, but I would say that. We, I think people who do the outdoor activities really learn how to have all the things they need to survive. Whether you're hiking, backpacking or bike, biking, we, we carry stuff with us so that should we need an emergency situation. Things we, like I have a stop the bleed kit, that kind of thing, but that trail is so close within the vicinity of Main Road. That I don't see that as a real problem. I mean, it's super close to Main Road.
Council, Councilwoman, the, the other comment I'd make there, so, and just some, some context for the council. I work for a company called Axon. I actually know the city does business with that company for tasers and body cameras. We also make 911 systems and the biggest single problem in the United States 911 systems is their ability to pinpoint your location. And this has gotten worse paradoxically with cell phones. Since they move around, they, they can't triangulate easily. What we have seen other trail networks do is put up signage that if you do need to make a call because you're in trouble, it makes it really easy. For first responders to know exactly where you are. So that's probably something that we could explore.
Excellent. Councilmember Schaefer?
Just a, a quick comment related to Councilmembers Nap, Napland's concern. I, I did ride extensively in both Colorado and Utah. And virtually all the trails I rode on were multi-use with both the hikers and mountain bikers. And I personally actually never saw an issue. Now accidents do happen. I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, pretend that doesn't, but. Mountain bikers are very aware of, of hikers, very courteous and regardless of what any sign might say. Mountain bikers always yield. Every, every situation I've seen or been in, mountain bikers always yield to, to hikers.
Thank you. Anyone have any further comments or questions? All right. Well, I just want to say, first of all, it was a pleasure meeting with the group a few weeks back. And you may not have heard my son in the background, but he's really excited about this idea as I, as my family is as well. And I think, you know, this, this is one of those parks projects like Disc Golf and a couple of the other items that have come up that are definitely doable. And really this one definitely fits in with our Parks Trails and Open Space Plan. And has an opportunity, more opportunity because of the, the strong volunteer. Maintenance network that's available. Our issue right now is of course, as council is well aware. Having staff capacity to take on the new projects when we've got a bunch of parks, projects budgeted for the biennium. But what I'm hearing from council is general support for the idea. And if, unless I'm hearing differently, I would like to just have this discussion with the other parks ideas that we're looking at in the mid biennium. Budget process to. Determine if we have any additional staffing to do some of this work, you know, put, kind of prioritize these lists. If we have the staffing capacity to do anything this biennium, great. And if not, make sure that they're on our priority list as a group. For the following biennium as far as budgeting and moving projects forward. So, you know, I would just want to make clear to council, bringing this forward is also making sure that we're following the same processes that we're following for every other parks request that's coming in. But I think that this is another one that is fantastic for the community. And that would definitely generate a lot of support and interest. And it's something that's actually really doable. So I'm thrilled that this group brought it forward. Glad that they stopped work and started going through the process the correct way. But I, I really think this could be a very positive improvement. To our community and especially get people out in nature a little bit more as well. So with that, thank you all for coming tonight. I really appreciate your presentation and. As the group already knows, this is something I would like to see done and it sounds like council does as well. So we'll continue to keep it on the list for review and move it forward. And I think what this also means is that if it doesn't happen today, it'll happen tomorrow. It's just a matter of timing and getting to that point of having the capacity to have the staff time dedicated for that portion of the project.
Yeah, well, Mayor, as I said to you when we talked last time, we're, we're very passionate. If it's not. Today, if it's tomorrow, if it's a few months, we're going to be around. We're, we're dedicated to this, this idea and we really want to say thank you for the time tonight. It's been a lot of fun.
Well, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Cheers.
Great, thanks. Okay, moving on to new business, we added for our first item, the complete streets update. So Mr. Lyshevsky, take it away.
Good evening, Mayor and Council citizens, if they're there. Steve Lyshevsky, Public Works. Okay, so coming out of the committee as a whole was a discussion that was to. Just give an update on our complete streets programming. As a, that's a product of grant dollars set aside by Washington State Transportation Improvement Board. That is solely for the purpose of completing streets, an element of street that is missing, i.e. curve, gutter and sidewalk. We have talked about this in the past and on your screen is, is the staff memo. Just making sure that folks are aware, any of the programming we have looked at is transportation impact fee expense eligible. And the three sections of roadway that were considered via staff and then public works committee were Cherry Valley Road. West, the whole innocent. Sure. On the north side. Road. Baton Road, which was out between 144th and the Amund Pond neighborhood. And then 150th between. Two 75th Place. And on the south side connecting into. Those merits were weighed and there were some individualized project sheets presented in the packet. We've got a little bit of slow here. And I lost people. If you're still there, I'm not hearing any response back.
You were cutting out, but I think you're good now.
Okay, thanks. So in the packet, these are all their options. Number one, two, three. So I'll just, the one on the screen here is the one on northeast 150th. It's a missing section. It is through some wooded area. It would probably be some sort of non-traditional alignment to keep some of the larger trees. The issue that is described with this project is it is part of the northeast 150th Capitol Improvement Project. Which does entail a lengthy amount of work between. 150th and a 275th intersection and then reaching all the way to the east on 284th or Baton Road. Didn't really feel the group, the staff didn't really feel and a public works committee agreed. That that was a bona fide candidate because it's part of a bigger picture.
I don't know, Steve, is he cutting out or not?
Not sure.
Steve, you're cutting out. Steve?
Complete corridor.
Steve?
Yeah.
You're cutting out, so maybe you can turn your video off and.
Does that help at all?
Try, I think so.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
If you don't mind, somebody else can either, the clerk can share the screen and I can just talk or not, but. Bottom line is Baton Creek is a development, construction related project that is still in active design review or approval. So it didn't really make sense to put them on the list and staff. Recommended the Cherry Valley Road piece. We have had quite a few inquiries now. Now we have the dog park in the area. There is no sidewalk on that side of the road. We did have TIB come out and virtually, we went over all these programming elements with TIB. They do support the Cherry Valley Road sidewalk as there currently would be no other funding sources eligible. For this road, meaning there's a couple other, you know, the 150th has a CIP. And then you have that road with development potential. So. Those were the supported elements from TIB's perspective on moving forward with our request for Cherry Valley Road. That's kind of the gist of it. We do need council approval to. Move forward with that programming in the request to the TIB. It would not be in the 2021 biennium. I believe the money would be available where we successfully awarded in 2022 timeframe later in the year. So we could do a budget amendment. We own the land, which is good. There's of course some grading, a little more than what you can see there in the road section, but. A good candidate. And we had, just as we, just so everybody knows too, talking about a crosswalk at First Avenue, which would be directly across from the, the actual. Property. That's not a candidate for another, that roadway section in that area is not a candidate for another crosswalk. The crosswalk, we do have a mid-block crosswalk at the elementary school. We would enhance that. We would enhance that with some rapid flashing beacons to facilitate, you know, more expeditions moving of people across the intersection. So that's kind of the gist of it. And I'm sorry, I'm not sure if my internet went out or, or whatnot. Go reset my router when I am off and try again.
Hey, Steve, this, this is Rick. I know you probably can't, can't even see us at, at this point. Can I ask a question?
Yeah, no, I can see and hear you all. I'm not
Oh, okay.
Why I'm so poorly.
Well, you sound okay now. Once the video will show. Let's see, Jody, could you put that graphic up again of, of the Cherry Valley sidewalk? Yeah, great. Thank you. It's good to have that in front of us. Yeah, I just wanted to kind of reiterate what you talked about as far as a crosswalk was concerned. So the yellow line there, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but the sidewalk ends right where that yellow line ends on the, on the left side, on the west side. Is that correct?
Yeah, if you're on Cherry Valley Road, there is only sidewalk on the east side. And it does connect from Main Street all the way to the school district, all the way back to Third Avenue. The sidewalk on the north side does not continue on. It is only in existence in front of the Holy Innocents Church, which is directly across from the elementary school.
That's right. Yeah, yeah. So, and Steve said this, but just so everyone is aware, a crosswalk right on First, First Avenue, which is directly across from the, the parking lot. The is, is not possible because of the safety hazard of the turn on Cherry Valley Road. There, they wouldn't see, potentially see pedestrians in time to stop. So Steve, where the crosswalk would be instead is across from the church, between the church, church and the, and the school? Or, or where?
Yeah, the church and the school already share a crosswalk.
Yes, correct.
So we would just enhance that and then continue the sidewalk from the Holy Innocents property to the, just past the driveway at the farmstead.
Yeah, okay, good, good. Yeah, and I, you know, I, I don't think I mentioned this at the time of our, our committee meeting, but we probably should consider some signage again towards the west side of that sidewalk to use, use that crosswalk. Don't cross, you know, don't jaywalk there because people like me are tempted to do that. And instead, use the crosswalk of the safety concern.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Councilmember Naplin?
Yeah, I have a couple comments here. I, I have some serious concerns that extending the sidewalk further west, dead ending at the least safe place to cross and being further away from a legitimate crosswalk. Just seems like you're asking for more people to be crossing at an unsafe location. Not really a sidewalk completion, it's ending a dead end further. So I, and I just, I'm just thinking about how much usage this would get. There's a sidewalk on the other side, the obvious place to cross if you're walking along there would be to cross by the school, not to keep going. I just wonder if this would be a better place to just have a trail connection to the park. I, I just have concerns we will be encouraging more people to cross where it's not safe. My second comment has to do with the other project on 150th. I've received quite a few emails and comments from different people about that missing piece. And the issue is you have very dense housing coming out from Fox Hollow. You know, further Crestview Estates that pop out at, I don't know, let's see, do you have the map here? I think I'm too zoomed in so I can actually say the correct name. So you don't have it labeled. Is it further up 150th? Trying to see, I wish there was a map. But when you pop out on, I think it's 278, coming from Fox Hollow, there's that missing piece of sidewalk further up.
There is, yeah.
And there's a lot of problems where people come out there and they want to head down into town. And they either have to cross kind of at an unsafe spot because there's no sidewalk. The sightlines are difficult. There's no lighting. It's a very popular place to walk. I mean, the amount of traffic there is very high. I, I just, I see us choosing the easiest project, but not necessarily the one that is the most needed. And it's similar to when I was frustrated with the 275th project. Well, that's a nice project. I, I don't consider that solving a significant problem. Where I, I feel like the other location, especially on 150th, is a problem. And we get lots of comments about it. I've experienced it again and again. That it is really not ideal on 150th. And I understand that there potentially could be another project, but just aligning the sidewalk with all the other sidewalk that's already been built along there. You know, I, I, I'm just really struggling on the investment of funds on a sidewalk that just extends to a dead end. When we have a serious issue here, in my opinion, on 150th, and have received a lot of comments.
So I, I can understand that, appreciate that. I'm always trying to be cognizant that that could be something that is put in that doesn't look the same when we did do a capital project. That's my concern. So, i.e. we invest the money and then we have to rearrange some things. That's my legitimate concern, which is fine. The comments we have received as
On 150th, it's in that same location, I guess.
Councilmember Naplin, let's let Mr. Lenishewski finish, please.
Sorry, I, I didn't know it was continuing.
I was just going to say, the only comments we have received as staff are complaints on Cherry Valley Road with the installation of the new dog park. I, I'm not against anything. I don't, I'm, you know, I think either of these are successful candidates fulfilling a need. Again, and I don't get as many calls or complaints or requests on this section. So it's a fair section. I completely understand it. It would complete some, some nice looping up on the hill. I'm all for it. I'm not, again, against it, other than timing of installation. I think 150th, you know, is in need of pretty soon remedies. And I, I see that as a road diet project. You know, it's a very wide bit of asphalt. It's very, very quickly degrading asphalt. We will have to do something sooner than later, assuming, you know, Third Avenue happens in the next handful of, of years here or less. This is, you know, currently another priority that needs to be addressed before we have to overlay, you know, 45 feet of asphalt that really only needs to be, you know, 22 feet for travel and vehicles with some bike lanes and some sidewalks, which most of that exists. So a completely different topic. And I know this is a great conversation. We had intended to have a cow a little more open. But it's fine to be a council.
So this, the spot I was talking about was actually a little further up 150th. It's the intersection. I think it's 278.
Councilmember Naplin, that's my neighborhood. So I'm, I'm, I, I walk on that all the time as well. But, you know, I do want to echo just for a second, Mr. Lenishewski's comments about Cherry Valley Road. There's actually been complaints about that missing link since we upgraded the sidewalk on Cherry Valley Road. So it's been a longstanding issue where folks have complained. The complaints that I've received are, I haven't actually received any additional on 150th. Personally, I've only received complaints about Cherry Valley. So, you know, I think it all depends on who you're talking to and who's talking to you based on what the complaints come in. So I just want to make that clarification that, that we do. In fact, every few months I, I get complaints about the, the lack of the sidewalk on that side of the road specific to Doherty Farmstead and accessing the dog park. Do any other council members have anything they'd like to add to the discussion or questions for Mr. Lenishewski? Councilmember McHenry, and then Miss Councilmember Schaefer.
Yeah, I mean, stuff like this is really tough because, I mean, wouldn't we love to just do all three? But I, you know, I don't disagree with anything you're saying, Councilmember Naplin. I know from myself walking on Cherry Valley there, I think, you know, it's not, like, I don't live over there. I don't walk it all the time. But the times I have, I didn't even realize it dead ends until you're past the crosswalks. You have to double back. I think that it may not seem like the highest priority project, but I, I do think it's a good safety concern to get addressed.
Thank you, Councilmember McHenry. Councilmember Schaefer?
Let's see, so I, I walk both, both of these routes frequently because I, I live in Camden Park and, and Cherry Valley is one of my, running my routes. But at any rate, the traffic tends to be a little faster. I don't even know what the speed limit is on Cherry Valley Road. It's probably 35 maybe or maybe.
It's technically 25, but yes, you can feel people do more than 25.
But, but on 150th, always an exception, but people tend to be driving slower, at least during the 30 mile an hour range. On Cherry Valley, people tend to be driving faster for whatever reason. And to me, that makes that a bit more hazardous as, you know, as you're, you know, crossing the road or walking where there's not a sidewalk. On top of that, the dog park over there is getting quite a bit of use. When, you know, I, I only take my dog there once, but, but when I walk by there, I check it out. And there's usually a number of cars parked in that lot. And because of that, I got to believe some people, which I did, I just walked my dog over there from my house, do that as well. So a sidewalk would be a nice addition. That being said, I share the concern about people not, you know, people shortcutting and jaywalking right at that turn. That could be a real safety hazard. And, you know, I mentioned possibilities from signage. Maybe, you know, maybe, I think there's a rail system there. Maybe we could extend that as well. Or something of that, that nature to discourage people from crossing, you know, crossing the road at that, at that turn, turn in the road. But I do like the idea of a sidewalk, a sidewalk there.
Thank you, Councilmember Schaefer. Anyone else? Okay. Well, it looks like we're going to need to bring this back for more discussion. Steve, do you want us to bring it back to committee of the whole?
Sure, it's fine.
Okay, perfect.
We have a little bit of time. The due date is until later in the year, but we do have, you know, paperwork to process to get these things out. Just trying to get ahead of the game and not do it late, not go to a force. And then, yeah, we're, we're pretty busy. So trying to fit it all in, which is becoming impossible.
So maybe what I would like to suggest is that, that folks provide their thoughts in email to Mr. Lenishewski before the next meeting so that we can collate those and, and have answers to questions and thoughts. And have a, a robust discussion and make some recommendations. Any objections to that? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to our first item of, official item of new business, Agenda Bill 21-69A. It's an ordinance, longevity ordinance clarification for discussion, Ms. Mason.
And councilmembers, Mayor Dana Mason, Finance Director. So on the May 18th council meeting, ordinance 1278 was approved by council with, for the non-represented regular and hourly pay scale. That ordinance was missing, or the longevity pay for one non-represented employee was missing for that, from that ordinance. So this ordinance is to rectify that. And just to give you a little history about the longevity pay. In 2015, many of the non-represented off, office staff joined the Public Works Teamsters. And then the remaining non-represented staff continued to receive longevity pay. And in January 28th, longevity was eliminated for all non-represented employees. And salaries were adjusted to compensate, except for the executive's assistant, the Public Works Director. So ever since then, the executive assistants has been receiving longevity pay. So this is just, it, it was budgeted, and she has been receiving it. This is just to rectify the admission. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Schaefer?
Just out of curiosity, back then, why did we keep it essentially for one, one person? Does anybody know the answer to that?
I, I think the reason, and, and City Clerk Wykoff, you might join in since you were there. But I think the reason was because everyone was already receiving longevity pay. And then she, this employee opted not to join the Teamsters with the rest of the, some of the non-represented employees. And this person was in a non-exempt employee. So most of the employees who stopped receiving longevity were exempt employees. So we just grandfathered this one position in.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, it seems to be non-controversial. Did council want to move this forward this evening or wait until the next meeting? And if waiting until the next meeting, did you want it on consent?
I'd like to
Councilmember Lingle?
Oh, I'm fine either way. I can, I can move it forward tonight.
Councilmember Schaefer?
I'd like to move it forward.
Councilmember, or Mayor Portem Remington?
Mayor, I'll recommend that we suspend our three touch rules in preparation for moving this forward this evening.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mayor Portem Remington and a second by Councilmember Schaefer to suspend the rules. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Mayor Portem?
Mayor, I recommend council approve Agenda Bill 21-69A ordinance, longevity ordinance clarification.
Second.
Do we have a Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Portem Remington and a second by Councilmember Schaefer to approve Agenda Bill 21-69A. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Thank you all. And moving on to Agenda Bill 21-70A, ordinance amending DMC 2.03, City Administrator for Discussion, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, interim city man, city administrator, Ryan Cotton. So some of you who might have tuned in during the committee of the whole knows this already, but at the risk of having someone here who's joining us or seeing this later that doesn't understand, I wanted to just briefly say that there are recommendations for amendment to the Duval Municipal Code associated with the recruitment and hire of a city administrator for the purpose of making that position as effective as possible and also realigning with other code provisions elsewhere in similar communities in the state of Washington. The, right now, there is very little language in the code that relates to the position. So this would change that and improve the outcomes that will be possible with such code amendments. The city attorney has worked and looked at five different communities and interacted with myself and Mayor O'Callander to decide, you know, what would be good to recommend. And I'm going to share those with you now, and they're in your packet. And there are several questions at the end. So what you're going to see is in a little bit of a raw state. But this is a first touch, so it's in a state that you can amend easily as well. So draft Duval Municipal Code amendments, a new chapter and chapter two, a section of chapter two labeled City Administrator. So what this, these provisions would do would be to create the office, the city administrator, which would be filled by appointment by the mayor, subject confirmation by the city council, serving at the pleasure of the mayor. The city administrator would take an oath of office. I mentioned that earlier. And that's what we give credence to doing so. Duties and responsibilities reflect the usual things you would expect that would then be populated job description. The, the main, two main ones are the city administrator shall supervise and administer and coordinate the activities and functions of the various city offices, departments, commissions and boards, carrying out the requirements of the ordinances and policies of the city council. The second major one is subject to concurrence of the mayor to hire or remove any, anytime any employees of the city subject to provisions of other laws and contracts. So the rest of this is, is standard. But I did want to say, there's no such provision now like this one, which enables the City Administrator to delegate authority department heads to appoint or remove subordinates in their departments. And subject to civil service and bargaining outcomes, et cetera. The salary would be set by the mayor within the budget limits established by the City Council. There's nothing in the code now that says that. City Administrator and interference by council members. So this is a common provision in many, many similar codes elsewhere in the state and nation. It's also, this language also appears in the City Council's code procedures that's currently under review. But essentially, it tries to reduce confusion and streamline effectiveness in that council members and committee members are expected to interact with the City Administrator for the purpose of getting things done. So council members are not, are not supposed to direct or request the appointment of any person or removal of, for example. And, and also, you know, the administrator's job is to do that. Nor should they give orders. Provided, however, of course, it's a transparent, open city government. Nothing prohibits the council from fully and freely discussing with the administrator anything pertaining to appointments or removals or anything else associated with city affairs. I'm sure you know that's the case with the mayor as well. My, I'm not covering all these that are standard and understood. So appointments that are made with the authority of the City Administrator, I mentioned what department heads would do under that language. But it is limited in that such appointments would be made on the basis of executive administrative ability and then, and of the training and experience of the appointees as per the existing Exhibit A, which deals with pre-employment screening and evaluation procedures. We, these procedures are what we just followed and then added to them, but, but the standard ones are in there when we followed for Chief Dubach. So the point is that you have to be qualified for, for your job if you're gonna work for the city of Duval. Here were some options I asked the city attorney to consider. We haven't done the whereas's yet, you know, that would follow, of course, when the language is ready for your adoption. This is a first touch. But I mentioned earlier in the COW that the, being a human resource officer for Duval is important. So this language would be shortened and added if you wanted, if you didn't object in the next draft in chapter two. And I also said that maybe labor relations should be called out and made clear. And he said, no, not needed. We've got that in the job description. It's not needing the support of the municipal code. So here's the other ones we considered, Clyde Hill, I don't know, Monroe, and there's four or five others. So I won't go through that. There's no budgetary impact. Here's the agenda bill. I think I've covered the basics. Happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Schaefer? You're on mute, Councilmember.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. I think we, we talked in the COW that the directors would report to the City Administrator, and I believe that also includes the police, the chief of police. Is that correct?
That's the way that the job description is written, and that's the way this code reads, although it doesn't call out the chief of police.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. But it, but it would be the, the chief of police. So the, my question is, is that common in cities? As opposed to having the, the chief report directly to the mayor? Because of the, you know, the, the criticality of the, that particular position. I'm, I, I guess I was a little surprised to see that, that reporting chain in place as opposed to reporting directly to the, to the mayor.
Well, it is common, but it includes the language here as well as in others in the council, mayor, former government, that it's subject to concurrence of the mayor. So at any time, the mayor can, can be the person responsible for directing that, that individual. And that's true of all the department directors. So the, the trick here is to find someone in this recruitment that is, is well aligned both with our current mayor, but likely with future mayors. Not, you should go anywhere, mayor. You know, we're looking forward to the future. So that's, that's, that's the trick. And that's why we're going to all the extra efforts with the work styles assessment. And, and by the way, I haven't forgotten your questions, Councilmember Lingle. I just want to come back to that in a minute.
And for Councilmember Schaefer as well, this is pretty common, but, and really what is supposed to happen when you have a city administrator on board. But, you know, hopefully, hopefully you will always have a mayor that's involved and engaged because you need a mayor to also make sure they're overseeing the city administrator and making sure they're doing their job well. And so ideally, you also have a situation where the mayor trusts the city administrator enough to conduct that day-to-day management of the staff so that the mayor can be out, you know, as to, to what Mr. Cotton pointed out this morning, or I'm sorry, early this evening, not this morning. You know, working more with council and working more on some of the external projects that need to happen. So it's, it's kind of an efficiency thing and trying to make sure you're not doubling up as well. So there's that clear line, if the mayor needs to step in, the mayor steps in. But if the mayor's stepping in, there's usually something wrong with that city administrator position and potentially that, that person in that position.
Right, okay, exactly. And has, is, has this been, I assume it has, but has this been discussed with Chief Dubach? Is he aware of the chain of command?
It's initial job description, which I wrote, was written that way, even without as much concurrence of the mayor being noted. And I was advised that that's not Washington law, so that was changed to reflect what Mayor Ocalando just said.
I see, okay.
And he was part of every draft.
Okay, good, thank you.
Councilmember Lingle, I, I wanted to make sure I, I addressed your questions when you asked about the operational role of the committee structure. And that's something that I, I think everyone needs to discuss when we get to that council procedures. In my view, and I emphasize it's just mine at this point, I see that the city administrator delegating liaison role to a, whatever department head makes the most sense. And, and being apprised if there's a need for additional support or additional information or a presence by the administrator. So I, I, maybe that, I should raise that with the attorney, maybe that should be revised here a little bit to make it clear that this, the, you know, direct, you know, discussion with department directors is, is obviously the norm in a committee meeting. So we don't wanna, we don't wanna deter from that certainly. The next thing you said is that the finance director has a role of needing to intercede or words that affect as an internal auditor. And the words later on in here say coordinate on, on the budget. I don't think it's intended to. Yeah, I'm not sure if I'm gonna find it right off. There's something here about the city administrator coordinating or the finance director being involved in the budget and the administrator coordinating with that person. Well, anyway, I'll make sure that, that the finance director's statutory role is not usurped in any way. I think that's essential. All right, you said if there was any irregularity, that is essential, but that be called to the attention of whomever without any interference. So that, thank you for that. You also asked about the emergency or economic development manager and whether they could assign some of that work or involve others. And that's, that's clearly the intent. And I think you also made the point about working with constituent groups and also regional bodies, whether the city council would be impeded in any way from doing so. And that is clearly not the intent. So I, I can relay both of those things and make sure that the language supports those outcomes.
I, I have a, I have a real basic question in a way is that, you know, we're changing code here and we are getting things more aligned. And as soon as I read this, the immediate thought I had is, what is our responsibility here to have a public hearing on this chain? And the reason, you know, because this is not questioning what is being discussed here. It's a procedural question. It's a code, I mean, it's a code change. So it's not just an ordinance, you know what I mean? So it, it, it does shift, well, it, it shifts things in a good way. Let me just say that, big picture. But a code change, I would think we need to have a public hearing, but I, I'm asking it as a question. Has that come up or when we? I'll just, I'll stop because I need to stop. But I think, I think I've said it the right way. I mean, because, and I say this in particular because we've got a really tight and important schedule to meet. And I am very happy about that schedule. I think it's, it's what we need to do. I just don't know if we have to have a public hearing or whether we would, you know, I guess the public could be very unhappy with us that they thought we needed to have a public hearing.
That's a legal question certainly and a policy question. So I'll ask the legal question, then I'll defer to council on the policy.
So Ms. Wykoff had her hand up, so I think she's got something to say on that.
Just gonna say, code changes in general don't always require a public hearing. That doesn't preclude council from requesting a public hearing. I am actually looking at a document right now and I might have an answer in a minute on if it's required by state law. It's just a summary from a MRSC publication about when they are required. So I'll take a brief look, see if I can come up with an answer. Otherwise, I think it, you know, it would be who best to ask the attorney. And if council wants to have one, whether it's required or not, we can definitely get it scheduled.
I would say the interest of time this evening, since there are several other things on the agenda, I mean, this is our first touch anyway. Check it out and, you know, see, see what the attorney says. And then I guess council needs to think if that's something they want to require. And if it's something they want to require, we need to figure out a way to get in a public hearing quickly. So, so our overall schedule is not impeded.
Great. That's a good point, Councilmember Lingle. And I think, you know, we can also do a little bit of research on which, you know, in general, which, or DMC updates have required public hearing or have had public hearing. I'm not, you know, I, I think there's, you know, there's, there's positives and negatives to doing it because, you know, on the one hand, you know, we, we are all elected to run the city. And this is simply setting out job description and duties that are primarily determined by state law. So, you know, what, I think that's a good discussion to have for sure. And while we're at it, so we are at nine twenty-three, we are definitely gonna go past nine thirty. So if it's okay with the body, I would like to entertain a motion now to extend the meeting. So we can keep discussing.
I'll make that motion second.
Great. We have a motion by Councilmember Lingle, a second by Councilmember Naflin to extend the meeting beyond nine thirty. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And then in the interest of time as well, does anybody have anything else that they would like to have looked at before the next discussion? So Councilmember Naflin and then Councilmember Hoag.
Okay, I, I noticed a couple of things that were different about our code versus some of the other job descriptions or codes. And one of them is, well, there's a statement that says, subject to the concurrence of the mayor when it talks about hiring and firing. And I, I, that seems somewhat consistent. But that statement was added into another section that I, I don't see common in any other city. And it's item F under the powers of the city admin, powers of the city administrator. And F says, subject to the concurrence of the mayor to recommend for adoption by the city council such measures as he or she may deem necessary or expedient. And I, I think that's kind of veering into policy work that the city administrator should feel free to make policy recommendations, which, I mean, if it's talking about adopting by council, measures being adopted by council, that would be policy or budget. I would want to be assured that the city administrator could make recommendations and it wouldn't require concurrence of the mayor. I, and I don't see that in other cities. And in fact, I think it's Clyde Hill. It mentions to recommend for adoption by the council such measures as he or she may deem necessary or expedient. So it's not there. And there's several other, others that talk about policy work. And, and it seems like more of a direct support to council to make recommendations that are policy related and not require some kind of concurrence with the mayor. So that, that was definitely something that's out as unusual. And then there's another section that seems to be written a little bit differently in different places. And in, I think in the job description, it was written that the city administrator would prepare a budget that they would then submit to the mayor and then the mayor would submit it to the council. And I think that's appropriate in how the intention would be that the administration of the city is handled by the city administrator. They would prepare the budget, then it would go to the mayor for any, you know, other tweaks or, you know, I'm assuming the mayor would be involved throughout. But in general, it's the city administrator and then go to council. But what I noticed in K, it says in cooperation with the finance director, assist in the preparation by the mayor. So that's talking about the mayor preparing the budget. I don't know, it's, it's just different. And I, I don't see that in, in the other, other cities either. They, they talk about the city administrator preparing the budget to submit to the mayor and then it gets submitted to council.
So I can, I can answer.
Prepare and submit to the mayor a tentative budget for the fiscal year. So, just a sec, I think I have another point.
And then, is it okay if I address the first two so I don't lose the, the train of thought? Because I think, so first of all, city administrator reports to the mayor. So the city administrator, and that's by law. So the city administrator should always have concurrence of the mayor before bringing something forward to council. That is standard for any, that is standard. Whether it's written or not, I do not know a single mayor whose city administrator goes forward to council with things that have not been vetted through the mayor. So that's a, a basic management and chain of command issue. But I understand where, where you're coming from as far as that's a little odd. I think what we're looking for is making those lines clear so that when we have new councils and new people come in the future, that it's, that that is spelled out. In relation to the budget, under state law, the mayor presents the budget. It is the mayor's budget. So what I think part, there is some history there that I'm happy to discuss with you offline and trying, and we can tweak the language, but the intent there is to, is to really make it clear that A, the finance director's involved. That B, it's the mayor's budget and that, you know, this has to be, that, you know, ultimately it's the mayor's budget. But the mayor does direct staff on what to do with the budget. So I think, you know, there can probably be some language tweaks there, but there's, there's a good basis behind it and happy to discuss that offline as well. So thank you for letting me get those two. And what are your next ones?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. It, it's just inconsistently worded between the different documents that have been prepared most recently. And so, you know, And so, you know, some documents, the administrator submits it to the mayor and then yes, the mayor presents it to council. A hundred percent. And that is consistent. It's just that it, the wording of that section K is inconsistent with how it's worded in the job description and other places. Um, okay, let me find, I gotta go back. Um. And then, let's see.
Can you hear the fireworks uh, in Seattle?
No.
I hear them outside my door.
Oh, boy. Um, that, I wonder if that's a baseball game, possibly?
It's right outside my door.
Okay.
We, we hope it's fireworks.
So um, the other item was under the interference by council members. And I just wanted to reiterate, it seems like a lot of that paragraph is talking about hiring and firing, that there should be no interference among council in, in any of uh, those personnel type matters. Um, and it, the one sentence that I think is important is it says, except for the purpose of inquiry, the council and its members shall deal with the administrative services solely through the administrator. So I think this is really focusing on giving direction to staff to do things. And also, you know, trying to meddle in hiring and firing. And so I just wanted to confirm that I'm, I'm reading that correctly, that inquiry conversations are not being prohibited by this paragraph.
Correct.
Okay.
Right. It, I, I just want to dive in there a little bit. It is recommended that um, the manager, the administrator be copied, you know, if it's an email inquiry. It's recommended that staff send a note to the administrator once the inquiry has been answered. So everyone has the same knowledge base. Indeed, it, it doesn't have to go through the administrator.
Yeah, I think that's our current practice and I, I agree. I think it's the best way to work. Um, and then I do agree about serves as a human resource officer. I like that paragraph that was, was being um, kind of looked at by the attorney. And yeah, I, there was another section and now I can't find it. Um, but it was just that the city council by resolution can request things to be done by the city administrator. And I, I've seen the language in several um, of these um, other cities. So if the council comes together and says, we want this done, or we want this report, or this or that, that the city council can request formally of the city administrator to do something. Um. I, I'd have to find it again. I, I, there's a lot of different cities, but I saw that several places. So anyway, that's, that's my feedback. Thank you for letting me have the time.
Yep. Thank you, Councilmember. Um, Councilmember Lingle?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I remember very, uh, something very clearly actually in the Ogden Murphy um, training about the roles and responsibilities and so forth. And uh, one of the things the trainer attorney said was that councils do not uh, use the, the authority to uh, issue a directive to administration, meaning specifically the mayor. Um, an example might be, we want you to come back with three options on this. I, I, I just, I'm just picking something. But it's got to go through that process. It's uh, that where the, the council as a whole is saying, this is the directive. Now that wouldn't, as I understand that, it, it doesn't get into personnel or anything like that. It's more um, to respond to things within a council's purview, which is money and policy. Um, so if it wanted to see options on a policy, it could do it. If it wants to see options on a budget, it could do it. It, but it's not going to get into the details of, I don't know, um, something that's regular business per se. That's what I remember from the Ogden Murphy training. And I believe there's actually some stuff in MSRC that talks about that too. But it is still an action of council on directives. But it's not like instructing a staff person. It's something that goes to the mayor from council. And I guess, you know, ostensibly, um, that would be in collaboration with the city administrator.
Uh, those are fine points that need some review by our city attorney. I will.
Yeah. I mean, I do think it's, we, that's something you don't do lightly, right? Um, but it is also something that would, you know, potentially come up in a committee discussion where the council, you know, their committee, their council committees and staff and mayor or their ex officio members. So a council committee could say, we want you to come back to options with us for consideration at the committee level. The, you know, a recommendation from the mayor and slash administration could be something other than what the committee wanted, but then the committee is, you know, council is going to make that final policy decision in the end of the day. And I'm not talking about uh, little, little things. I mean, council also has the right to decide what kind of finance reports it wants as an example, because it's budget related. So that's what I remember about directives. Which is part of why I was talking about, you know, how do the committees are going to work and stuff like that. So. And I think the new procedures can help refine some of these things as well. Wouldn't necessarily all be in code if it's permitted under state law, I guess.
Um, Councilmember Hoag had her hand up earlier and then Councilmember Schaefer.
Well, I, I have a question about the next page. I'm not sure who's in charge of scrolling down on this, but, and it actually might be a really stupid question, but I, I have to ask. So it says that a council member cannot um, apply for this position. They have to be off council for a year before they can apply. But there's no mention of whether the mayor could, but maybe it's just like the mayor can't hire themselves, right?
Correct. Yep. No, good catch, council member. It should say mayor or city council. Um, cause that's the intent. Yep, that's the intent.
Okay, okay.
I didn't catch that in all the reviews. Obviously, sometimes you're, you're thinking your intent and it doesn't always come out on paper correctly.
I don't know how you would hire themselves for that job, because that's who does the hiring, right?
Um, so, so what ha, what has happened in other cities and it actually became a big issue and there were were court cases in the last few years in Washington State is a city, a, a mayor actually did resign and then was immediately hired by the city council as their city administrator. Um, and there were lots of lot of problems with that and not the least of which, it looks bad. Even if it were technically okay, it's, it just looks bad. Um, and, you know, I think you would need to question as well. Um, I think the public would really need to question an action like that from going from um, a job that's not paid very well to essentially doing the same thing for pay and um, benefits without that public vote. Um, so.
Then mayors make decisions on the, on the salaries and then they go and get the job and.
It all, it all depends on, um, it all depends on that council's procedures and your code. Um, so in many cities, the mayor does have more authority over um, over salary. Um, in our city, that doesn't exist. Um, but it's, it's a protection. It's making sure that you don't get into a perception or a real ethical issue. Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes, related to uh, council committees, uh, just kind of an extension of Councilmember Lingle's uh, uh, concern related to committees. Uh, I think we're all aware that the committees uh, tend to be have more of a conversational type uh, format. Uh, and uh, you know, people speak pretty frankly, frankly there. I would uh, much prefer that a uh, city administrator have a uh, really a hands, hands-off um, uh, relationship to those committees. And I don't know what language we can put in there that would, you know, suggest that. I don't want to, you know, I don't want to forbid them from coming to a, a committee meeting, but on the other hand, the, you know, the committee chair and the director are really kind of the main, you know, the main focal points of a uh, committee uh, discussion. And uh, I would like to keep it, uh, you know, keep it that way, you know, as we currently, currently have it. So Ryan, whatever um, language you can come up with, uh, that would be, that would be appreciated.
Um, yeah, um, Mayor?
I, I was just gonna point out, um, just in general, and this is just a point of information, is that, you know, again, city administrator oversees department directors. So a city administrator is going to need to be involved in knowing what's going on with the, with the committee agendas. And we'll need to have veto power over certain things because again, you could get into a situation, you know, we don't have that, this today. But down the line, you could be in a situation with a director that is going rogue and not following, um, not following the direction of city administrator or the mayor. Um, and the city administrator would need to get involved. Um, the other thing to, to remember is that uh, you know, we, in our city, we currently have a finance and administration committee. And it's not necessarily appropriate for the finance director to be running um, employee-related issues through the committee unless their role is human resources. So for example, uh, we'll have some, some topics come up um, in the not-too-distant future with the finance adminis, administration committee that are much more appropriate for Ryan to run through the committee than for Dana. So I mean, I see, I see your point about language, but I just want to put that information out there to help guide um, that thinking and that language development.
Sure. Yeah, no, and I'm not looking at changing any of our current processes. I, I think what we have works, works very well. Uh, I just don't want to institute some additional, you know, constraints over committees uh, other than what we currently have.
Mr. Cotton?
There's a third example and a present company accepted, but I've seen it elsewhere, where um, a council member may feel exceptionally powerful, uh, even though they're not, because you work together as a group, that's where the power is derived. But sometimes in that committee role, someone may go a little bit beyond um, the capability of, of their, their role. And that, I, will, will, it, it can impact on a department head or other staff member um, in, in terms of their desire to continue to work for a community. You know, they, they, what I'm trying to say is a city administrator sometimes needs to be a bit of a buffer to moderate, ameliorate, facilitate, um, protect on occasion. So uh, I, I, I will explore that notion, but I wouldn't want to say that a hundred percent of the time, it must always be that way, because there may be sometimes where this administrator would need to um, become involved to, to make sure that, that everything stays copacetic.
Yep. And I, I completely agree with that, Ryan. Like I say, I don't want to prevent them, you know, from coming to the uh, meetings. Uh, just, you know, a matter of keeping checks and balances in, in place.
Yep. Councilmember McHenry?
Just to tag on to Councilmember Schaefer, um, I, I agree. I don't know that there's any language that needs to be changed here, but I just wanted to recognize his concern. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, what you're trying to get at is if a city administrator attends, um, not losing out on the um, the nature of the committees where it's a, a conversation. So I think was your concern more just of someone um, dominating the conversation, having it be more of a one-way conversation? Is that kind of what you were getting at? Cause currently as it kind of flows pretty freely, but I think, I think that would really come down to the right individual getting into this role and understanding that balance. Um, and it would probably be really hard to put that into words, but knowing that the people working on this process and recruiting would kind of understand that as well and find the right person for the role.
Yeah, and that, that is my concern. And Amy, you, 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 you pretty much hit it on the nail. That and the potentially for, you know, for the uh, uh, director to feel maybe not quite as open uh, to speak if his, his or her boss is sitting there.
Great. Does anyone have anything else on this tonight? Okay. Seeing none. Um, thanks for all of the, the comments and conversation. Um, we'll go ahead and keep working on this and bring it back. Um, and then for that, we will move on to Agenda Bill twenty-one dash seventy-one A, approved resolution providing for special COVID nineteen utility assistance grant program funding. Um, and before Ms. Mason takes over, um, I do want to preface, we are going to have the larger ARPA conversation. Um, but uh, Director Mason did bring this forward to me uh, in acknowledging that we have folks that are past due. Um, and then, and potentially carrying on what we've done before. At the same time, the um, the governor has extended uh, the utility issue and I will go ahead and let Ms. Mason take it away, but I wanted to provide a little bit of context uh, before she um, shares her information.
Thank you. Good evening again, Dana Mason, Finance Director. So can everyone see my screen okay? So as I mentioned, um, the, the governor in twenty twenty, uh, he is issued a proclamation to suspend late penalties and shut offs for all utilities. And after the agenda bell went out on, on the second, uh, uh, shut off the termination of the moratorium for shut offs and late fees was moved from July thirty-first to the end of September, and this will be the final extension. As of the end of May, um, in two thousand nineteen, at the end of May, not, uh, there was six hundred and sixteen dollars in ninety days past due accounts. Um, at the end of May in twenty twenty-one, there is forty-seven thousand dollars in um, the ninety days past due accounts. So um, council accepted the ARPA funds on June fifteenth. We've already received over the first half, which is just over one point one million dollars. Whoops, wrong one. There we go. There we go. Um, uh, so, so we've received the ARPA money, money, but we have not, there are no appropriations, budgeted appropriations for that fund. So anything that the city needs to spend of ARPA funds needs to be approved by council. So we're requesting the use, um, so similar to what we did with the CARES Act funding, council authorized thirty-five thousand dollars for utility assistance and CARES Act funding. Not that much was used, six thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. Um, the city has been getting, getting calls about the moratorium ending and shut offs and if there's going to be late fees and people still struggling to pay for utilities. So we're requesting the use of up to forty-seven thousand dollars in ARPA funds for the program with a similar program of what the city did with the CARES Act funding where uh, we send the letter to everyone who has a, a, a late fee balance and say, if you, if this is due to uh, COVID, the economic impacts of COVID, and um, please sign here and the city will grant you this money to help you with your two utility bill. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Napland, Schaefer, and then Lingle?
Yeah, just real quickly, um, for those that maybe just got behind for other reasons, they knew there wasn't a late fee, they had other things going on. Could, could there be something in there that, that talks about, you know, a payment plan or something like that? Just it's coming to an end. You know, there's also a payment plan if you've just gotten behind. I, I think people want to be honest about whether COVID impacted them, but really some people might need, you know, some time to get back up to speed.
Mm-hmm. I think we need to discuss that putting in place a twelve-month payment plan, which is what a lot of cities are doing. You pay your regular utility bill and then just a little of your past due balance over the year. But we could definitely add that to the letter so they know that that's coming.
Councilmember Lingle?
No, I thought Councilmember Schaefer was going next.
I'm sorry, I'm getting my order mixed up. It, it's late.
My order here.
Thank you. Councilmember Schaefer? You're on mute, Councilmember.
Thank you. Uh, Director Mason, the, so there's really no vetting process here. They, we simply send them enough, you know, the folks that are, that have ninety days past due, we send them a letter, ask them if it was due to COVID, if they checked, yes. We, we uh, you know, send some of the uh, ARPA funds that are, you know, for that. Is that correct?
That is. They would sign an attestation letter saying that yes, it is due to the economic hardships of COVID. And then not, not a lot of people took us up on the last um, round. The people that did were really, really grateful. And then not a lot of people took us up on the last round. The people that did were really, really grateful. If there is a possibility, we could ask for some sort of proof if, if council would like to go that route. Maybe.
Maybe an explanation on their part of how the, how they impacted. I, I, I am concerned we just make it too easy, right? And there weren't, and there was, you know, some level of, you know, some number of households out there. Perhaps they're not being completely honest that, and they weren't impacted by COVID. It was other, other things, or they simply chose not to pay their utilities because they were hoping to get reimbursed, reimbursed in this manner. There, you know, people could take advantage of, of that. Now, I know there's no, there's no way we can truly vet this. There's no way we can be, be 100% sure. And I don't want to impose more work on us, the city, to go through, well, does that sound like a reasonable explanation or not? I, I don't think, I don't think we should be in that role. But I, I am just a bit concerned that, that people were expecting help and are maybe taking advantage of the, of the program. And I know that would be a minority of people. I do think most people would be very honest, but, but there will be, you know, there probably will be some of that, and I don't, frankly, I don't have even a good idea on how to, you know, what to, you know, what to do. Because I don't want us to be set, set, us, the city, or the staff of the city put into a judgment role if this qualifies or, or not.
Yeah, Councilmember Schaefer, that's a good point, and that is something that Director Mason and I have been discussing in the last couple of weeks. And I think one of the, one of the challenges for folks explaining why, why they were in that hardship is as soon as they write it to the city, it becomes public record. And so there's a challenge with making sure that we don't shame, or that they have, they're not susceptible to being shamed by a public records request or either.
That would be an invasion of privacy, I agree.
Yeah, and that's, that's really, you know, I, I agree. I do think it's a minority. And so one of the things I've asked Director Mason to consider as we move forward with this is what, if there are any changes as far as more than the attestation letter, which is, I believe it's technically a legal signature. So there's, there are consequences if they're found to be lying. But you know, that the, with the small amount of money that is there, the scamming, if there is any quote-unquote scamming of the system or people taking advantage, that the cost to determine that or, or prevent it is probably more than the cost that we would lose as a city. And I think that's, that's where it's really hard with these small, with these small dollar amounts. But that is definitely part of our discussion, trying to figure out how we can make that a little bit better and a little bit more controlled.
Sure, sure. Maybe just some wording, as you say, to, you know, you know, notify that this is an illegal attestation, that you have been impacted by, by COVID. Something like that. Because again, yeah, I realize our, our staff doesn't have the time. It's just not a good useful time to be put into a, a judgment role if this qualifies or, or not.
Yeah. Councilmember Lingle, and then Bridniki and McHenry.
Yeah, I, it just so happens I read the, the May finance report, and I always like it when we have this, the past due stuff in it, because now, this is a question for our finance director, but I wasn't quite sure the way you did, did your chart, but what, you have 90 days past due, and you go up to 120 days past due. And I can't tell, looking at the chart, how, how accumulating that is. But let's just say that they're discrete categories. That's how I'm reading your chart. In reality, what that chart says is that in 2021, we had, just by adding it across, we had over $60,000 in past due utility bills. Am I reading your chart correctly? I know you know your numbers.
So that was with 60 days past due, and I actually brought that up just in case somebody asked about it. Or maybe I didn't.
But it's okay either way. My, my, here's the point I'm trying to make, is that we can see the trends. And we've talked about it in the finance committee several times. And, and it's not just the, the total amount of money, 47, you know, pick a number on that past due continuum. It's the number of people that are behind. It's not just, I mean, if it was a person who owed $10,000 or, you know, even $5,000, that would be one thing. But if you look at the number of people that changed, thank you for bringing that up. It's very, it's very interesting when you start looking at that, right? 111, 87, 62. And then you compare that to 2019. So it's not just the amount of money. It really is the number of people. So I don't have a problem with this continuing the way we did it before. Because I think when you start to really look at numbers of people in need, it's pretty clear that something happened in 2020 that has changed this pattern of, of past due. So I'm fine with the way you've proposed it. And I think, I think sorting through a bunch of small amounts of money and, fine if you want to change the wording in the affidavit, but I don't think it's worth the staff time. I think we are calculating our staff time when other things have been over $73, yeah, $73 an hour or something like that. How do you verify that many people that need utility assistance? I just don't think it's very practical.
Thank you, Councilmember Lingle. Councilmember Bridniki?
Yeah, I'd like to yield to Councilmember McHenry.
Okay, thank you. I, I guess my quick question is, is this something we anticipate happening again? Or, I mean, this is within this time, I see it as a one-time thing, so I just wanted to confirm that with you. Okay, head nod, yeah. I think, you know, you know, in regards to do people intentionally make choices to where they're not paying the utility versus something else? Yes, that's just a reality, because if I need to choose between making my car payment, which a bank will repossess if I don't, and not, and missing out on my utility payment, which I know there's programs in place for them to not get cut off for me, absolutely, I'm going to make my car payment. So I just want to kind of point out that perspective that I've been thinking about. It's kind of heavy on my heart. I would just like to go ahead and do this. I, I think it's the right thing to do.
Thank you. Councilmember Hogan, then Remington?
Oh, it looks like, when I looked at this, it looks like it goes through May. So if the orders have been extended through September, we're going to have four more months, correct? Of unpaid, possibly unpaid rent, I mean, utilities?
Yeah, and, and it will take a little while to get the program going, to get the letters out, you know, probably towards the end of July. So at that point, or, you know, in the next, next few months or so, so that will be one month past. And then there, there would be two months after that. So we could, we could definitely wait for one month and start it in August if you'd like to do that, just to see.
Great. Mayor Purtem, Remington?
Thank you, Mayor. I fully support helping those in our community. That really is a big part of why the money's here. There are all kinds of folks in different financial positions, including those that incomes, lost their income, just can't keep up. And so I think it's a total appropriate use of the ARPA funds. Personally, I do like to see someone at least fill out a application or a request, you know. It could be as simple as an email, but I, I think that simple act of having somebody fill it out, that, you know, it's different when you decide to just say, I'm not going to pay it, and somebody else pays it for you. But when you have to ask, yes, I, I need support, it changes the dynamic for a lot of people. And it doesn't mean somebody won't try to, to take money that, that they don't really need. But I think just simply requesting it. Mayor, I appreciated your comment about not shaming. The last thing I'd want to do is shame somebody in the community. I think by public records requests, somebody could already ask who hasn't paid their bill, and we'd provide them the information. So I, I don't see it as something that, you know, it's not public facing. And, and there shouldn't be shame asking for help. There probably a time in our lives where everybody has to say, I need help. If not financially, with something else. So there shouldn't be any shame in that. We've gone through an extremely tough time. So again, I'm fully supportive of it. I don't want to create a lot of extras, well, any extra staff time. But I think just simply having folks say, if you need help, you can request it, and, and that'll be considered. If, if it turns out that's extra work, we just don't have time. I get that fully and happy just to pay that bill, call it good and be done. But I do think just that simple step of having somebody request changes the dynamic. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Mayor Purtem. Councilmember Bridniki?
I just want to say, I, I would support it. In the past, we've had delinquent bills, and we've always figured out something to help people in our community. And after this year, and I myself included, have to go through some extraordinary budgeting. I think, I think I'm not too concerned about people taking advantage, and there is a time limit, so.
All right, thank you. So it seems like there's support moving forward. The question then is, does council want to suspend rules and approve this this evening? Put it on the consent agenda for the next meeting, or have it go through one more touch at the regular meeting? Mayor Purtem?
Mayor, I'd recommend we put it on the consent agenda. It'll speed up tonight just a little bit. I don't think we're in a hurry since there's already a moratorium on shut offs and so on. So I think that would simplify it and move it forward right away.
Any objections to that? Councilmember Nappland?
I, I'm not sure if we're adopting the letter that goes with it, but the idea to potentially put in some language about having a payment plan in there. So the letter's in the packet, and so I wasn't sure if.
I don't, I don't think you need to.
Try to add that to it. I just wanted to throw that out there. But I'm in consent agenda. I would like to see something like that.
We'll make sure that gets included in the letter. Not a big deal. Thank you. So we'll move that to the consent agenda at the next meeting. So we'll go ahead and move on to Agenda Bill 21-72A, authorize the use of up to $25,000 in American Rescue Plan Act funds for the purchase of personal protection equipment and other eligible expenditures. Ms. Mason?
Well, this is the same thing, you know, council approved the ARPA funds. We're asking for $25,000, or up to $25,000 to purchase PPE for things like opening the, the buildings for rental, those, they have to be extra cleaning, there's going to have to be supplies there for people to clean. Just it's a safe opening of, of just even City Hall will take a little bit extra PPE-type equipment or materials. We might have to buy some, some air purifiers for our rental buildings. So the, the air circulated properly. So it's just so we can buy that type of things, which is an eligible use of the ARPA funding.
Any discussion? Councilmember Schaefer?
Just a quick question. So this isn't for past expenses, this is for future expenses, is that correct? Okay.
Yeah, but there may be a few items that will, would be eligible of PPE that we've already purchased, like for the cooling station that was a, a public, a public area that we got ready. There was some stuff that we had to purchase for that to keep people safely distanced and to sanitize. So that could be an eligible use, but we, we do have to make sure that it's, it's for the public, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Nappland?
I'm just wondering if we could get, and maybe I've missed it, and you have provided it, but just an updated report of our expenditures related to COVID. We were getting that before. Just, just to understand, you know, the categories of expenditures related to COVID.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor Purtem?
Mayor, this one seems pretty straightforward to me. It's new things that we need. So I, I move the council to suspend our three-tex rule in preparation to pass Agenda Bill 21-72A tonight.
I second that.
We have a motion by Mayor Purtem Remington and a second by Councilmember Lingle to suspend the rules. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes.
Mayor Mike Remington? I, I move that council approve Agenda Bill 21-72A, authorize the use of up to 25,000 in American Rescue Plan Act funds for the purchase of personal protective equipment and other eligible expenditures.
Second, McHenry. We have a motion by Mayor Purtem Remington and a second by Councilmember McHenry to approve Agenda Bill 21-72A. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Bill 21-73A, acceptance of Washington State Direct Grant Program awards, police station building and wastewater treatment plant building renovations for discussion and decision. Ms. Mason?
Once more, so the city received 104,860. This is after the administrative fees taken out for the police station renovations. And an award of 727,160 for the wastewater treatment plant office remodel. So this is just for the, for council to approve the mayor to accept the award. Budgeted sources, just so you know, for these projects, it was, there was 104,000 in Main Street bond proceeds budgeted. And then for the wastewater treatment plant office remodel, there was $660,000 in wheat budgeted. So that can be moved, repurposed for other capital projects. And then the Main Street bond proceeds could be repurposed for the police station roof, roof replacement. Are there any questions?
Council, Mayor Purtem Remington?
Mayor, this one seems pretty straightforward. At the Cal, we recognized Senator Dingra and Representative Springer and Goodman for helping support our city and provide these funds. I think we should accept it. And the sooner the better. So I move that council suspend our three-tex rule in preparation for passing this Agenda Bill this evening.
Second?
We have a motion by Mayor Purtem Remington and a second by Councilmember Lingle to suspend the rules in order to vote on the underlying Agenda Bill. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes.
Mayor Mike Remington, I move that council approve Agenda Bill 21-73A, acceptance of the Washington State Direct Grant Program awards for the police station building and the wastewater treatment plant building renovations.
We have a motion by Mayor Purtem Remington and a second by Councilmember Schaefer to approve Agenda Bill 21-73A, acceptance of Washington State Direct Grant Program awards, police station building and wastewater treatment plant building renovations. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Moving on to unfinished business, Agenda Bill 21-64B, Roney Road overlay contract for discussion and/or decision. Mr. Lindashevsky?
Good evening, Mayor. Council, Steve Lindashevsky, Public Works. I take it my video and audio are synchronized at this moment? Excellent. Okay, so we're excited to present the first, first ever transportation benefit district overlay for the city of these all. It's been a long time coming. You are aware that we have had a design together. You are aware we did go out to bid, and in the packet, we have presented the findings and submission of bids. The project is right around the budget, and we're excited to move forward with low bidder. Lakewood paving is the apparent low and confirmed low. They have been vetted, and staff are recommending moving forward with a paving contract for Roney Road with Lakewood. They have been vetted and staff are recommending moving forward with a paving contract for Roney Road with Lakewood Paving. Any questions on this item?
Seeing no questions, would someone like to make a motion for approval?
Here, I'll move that we suspend our three touch rule. I think we're still on our second touch uh, in preparation for passing it this evening.
Second, McHenry.
We have a motion by Mayor Portem Remington and a second by Councilmember Henry McHenry to suspend the rules. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Uh, all those opposed, please say no. Motion passes.
Mayor Mike Remington, uh, I move that council approve Agenda Bill twenty-one dash sixty-four B, the Roney Road Overlay Contract.
Second, Bridniki.
We have a motion by Mayor Portem Remington and a second by Councilmember Bridniki to approve Agenda Bill twenty-one dash sixty-four B, Roney Road Overlay Contract. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Um, and with that, we move to our last item of unfinished business, Agenda Bill twenty-one dash thirteen E, Westcott Duval Village Commercial Application Extension Request, uh, formerly Agenda Bill twenty dash thirty-five. Ms. Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and the one remaining community member on our meeting this evening. I just wanted to go through and discuss um, our uh, Duval Village Commercial Differment Request again. Uh, this is for discussion only and direction. And then coming back at the next council meeting and hopefully having um, approved terms of conditions for the extension of commercial development on parcel C one. So just going back through and looking at the project summary one more time for Duval Village. In two thousand fourteen, we entered into memorandum of understanding. In two thousand fifteen, we approved a development agreement between the three parties. The development agreement does expire ten years after it was approved. So in two thousand twenty-five, preliminary plat was received in two thousand fifteen and final plat was achieved in two thousand nineteen. In two thousand twenty, the city granted permit extensions to DFA, Duval Foundation for the Arts. Um, and that was for a two-year temporary use permit for a tent that expires on twelve eighth of this year. It also allowed the extension of their commercial deferment for them to be under construction and complete their building within ten years of final plat consistent with our mixed-use development standards. Uh, the terms of that agreement do require two progress reports per year. Um, and that was approved in February of two thousand twenty-one. In two thousand twenty-one, which is also this year, home construction began. They are now uh, pretty far along vertically. They have about ten buildings under construction and their first building has achieved most of their occupancies. Uh, Wes Scott, uh, who's one of the partners within the development agreement, requested to defer the commercial development in the January, January of two thousand twenty. During two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one, city uh, has considered the request at council, planning commission, the land use committee, and at public hearing, at the public hearing. Uh, this is just um, more of just a visual aid. So you can see over here on the left, this is what the lots look like. And then on the right-hand side, you'll see the blown up area of commer- of commercial lot C one. So that is right here in your right-hand corner. And then this parcel right here is the DFA parcel. And then we have the commercial, a commercial lot that contains um, parking that we share with DFA for both their activities and then also for city activities to get to uh, the trail. Uh, just a little bit additional information. We have gone back and forth quite a bit. So we did receive the official request in January of two thousand twenty. Uh, and received a letter from callers international, which provided some very minimal information on market, on the market analysis. And then we received a second letter September eleventh of two thousand twenty. Um, per the request of the planning department and city council. And we began processing it again late last year in September. Um, we've received emails from Wes Scott, whether it's from their project manager Melanie Davies or from their, um, their president as well. Um, we've continued to go through the process and really the latest piece that we have completed is the public hearing and the planning commission recommendation that was completed in May of this year. We've continued to update the land use committee through the month of May and June. And we've also received more email exchanges from Wes Scott in May and June, and those are within your packet and have been shared and discussed with the land use committee over their last uh, two meetings. Um, this is the actual planning commission recommendation. Uh, this began in um, really as in earnest, you know, about eight months ago, as we started to put together terms of an agreement after, you know, discussions, you know, whether it was at a council level or a planning commission level or at a, or at a committee level. And so this is in your packet as well. I won't, I won't read them into the record. We've, we've done that a couple of times. But I did want to note that before the city council meeting, I did receive an email from a council member requesting some potential um, additions or modifications to this. And I'll let that council member bring those forward when the time is right. Um, just to give a little bit more of an update, as you can see in your packet, you've seen some correspondence with Karik Edwards um, since the last meeting in the packet. Um, the land use committee has spent the last two meetings discussing um, some of the emails and the development agreement. And so we did respond to the questions that Karik asked in a staff memo. Um, our city attorney did attend the last land use committee to answer any remaining questions that the committee had. Um, honest, to be honest, the, you know, Wes Scott and the city, we're not in the same place right now. They do not agree on a few items. And that's addressed in the sap, in the staff memo as well. Um, the staff memo describes the issues and responds to the relationship that we have with DFA and why they um, are, you know, their conditions were different than what the conditions are proposed for Wes Scott Homes. Um, we also discussed uh, the development agreement terms and the plat infrastructure. I do want to make it, you know, really clear that when we entered in the development agreement, it did include a five-year deferment of commercial development for both DFA and for Wes Scott. It also included um, the ability for Wes Scott to develop their plat within three phases. And that would provide them the ability to, to put their infrastructure in, which are curb, gutter, sidewalk, the park improvement, sewer, water. And they ended up choosing to do one final plat. But I think there is confusion between um, Wes Scott and the city on um, phasing an infrastructure versus um, their feeling that they've already um, completed the first part of commercial development of um, parcel C one. Um, as of today, staff has not met with the owner. You can see the email uh, correspondence. They um, insisted on conditions of the meeting that included um, you know, not, not paying for the, the meetings and we require that all development um, be billed out on a monthly basis. Um, and so it was, it was definitely a struggle to try and have a meeting. As you can see, there was a lot of back and forth email. Um, again, they don't agree with the terms of approval. Their preference is to have no terms at all. Um, I do want to discuss now essentially, you know, what are the recommended changes to the current proposed terms? If there are any um, by council. So I will go ahead and stop sharing the screen. I can always pull it up, but this way I can see council and the mayor.
Councilmember Lingle?
Um, yeah, when I um, you know, this has gone back and forth between as, as Director Thomas has shared, so. Um, but when I looked at this final thing coming to us, presuming we're going to take some action on it, I just noticed a couple of little things. Um, and this maybe they're a little baby, they're not giving, given the history with the developer. Um, but when it talks about the marketing report language, uh, we use the word, the, the word will uh, in that language. And what we really want to be doing, I think, in development agreements is saying, using the word shall. So that we're much more definitive. It has a different legal connotation. So that's my first comment. Doesn't change the items that are re, being requested uh, in, in a marketing study. Um, the other thing is the question was asked in the packet information, do we want to include a larger area? This is a comment, I think, you know, a market, given how fast the valley is growing. Um, it seems to me that the market area, you know, depending on what point you want to measure it from, is very likely more than uh, than five miles. And you know, Duval is part of Monroe's market area. And you know, granted, there's a lot more in Monroe, but we are looking forward. We're not just looking at these things that in today's terms, we should be thinking about the big picture of what's going on, not just in Duval, but also Carnation, for example. Uh, this is just a comment. I just want us to remember that we don't control who does the marketing study in this, and I'm not suggesting we can. But we should always remember that if that consultant is the same one that is doing all their business with Wes Scott, there's a built-in conflict of interest in that situation. We should always remember uh, that it's not a completely independent study. And then the last thing, and it's item number four, that I, I continue to be really bothered with, which is that it states that the city will agree and welcome a further extension if Wes Scott has a potential partner purchaser or similar. And the, the problem I have with that is that market conditions change all the time. We have no idea what that partner or purchaser or whatever would be. And I, I have a problem as a council member making a commitment to something in the future that I have no idea what it looks like. I, that, you know, the other things are really minor in the scheme of things that have gone on with this project. But I, I have a real hard time agreeing in advance to something that I don't even know what it is or who the purchaser is or what the possible partner is. And um, I, I reflect on a number of years ago in the city of Seattle, a council member signed on to a zoning change and what that meant was strip, strip development, which is a type of commercial. And there was nothing to prohibit that. But I don't think that's going to happen in Duval. But my point is that we were in that situation. They were agreeing to something that was not well-defined. And they ended up with the commercial situation that was not desirable. And uh, in this language, we are automatic, we will agree and welcome a further extension. I would suggest that it be more something like um, that we will consider a further extension and then leave the word welcoming in, in the language. So, those are my.
So first off, I'm seeing several head nods um, to that suggestion. Uh, from my perspective, I, I like that suggestion. Um, so I'm in concurrence with Councilmember Lingle. Um, I think I saw four heads nod. Um, are there any objections to that recommendation? Councilmember Schaefer?
Not, not an objection, an absolute support for it. I think the way uh, item four reads right now is way too lenient, can be, can be interpreted in many different ways. And I, I think that language definitely needs to be shored up and in favor of the uh, city. So um, you know, we'll cons, as, as Councilmember Lingle suggested, we'll consider an extension. Um, or perhaps even something stronger than that. Cause I mean, how do we know, you know, they can say that they're working on it, they have it advertised, that means they're working uh, with the maybe, you know, have some conversations going on, but that doesn't mean there's anything serious going on as far as the, you know, possible sale or lease of the property. So we, we need some stronger language there.
Alright, anyone else? Councilmember Naplin and then Bridniki?
Yeah, I actually agree with all four points that Councilmember Lingle brought up. Um, the one I had specifically looked at was the radius uh, around you know, is it a focal point or you know, how you, you look at our, you know, the, the capture of a business that could potentially be built on that commercial site. And the way it was done, it was a mile from city hall. And so basically you got all of the flooded valley on one half of the circle. And the other half of the circle barely made it through city limits. And it just, it, it just didn't make sense to me. Um, so perhaps something like a mile from the perimeter. So you'd follow the outside of the city and then extended a mile or um, you know, center the mile, the one, the distance from another point than the furthest northwest corner. Uh, I hope that makes sense what I'm, I'm trying to explain. But um, we do have to think that our capture, our, our capture audience for um, the businesses, it's not like, you know, being in some other area where there's other options for places people to go. If you're in nine eight oh one nine in the unincorporated area or even at Lake Marcel, we're it, you know? I mean, you're going to come through Duval most likely on your way out and in. And uh, so I think that our market uh, legitimately includes a lot more than just city limits. Um, and even, even just, even more than our zip code. Because you look at Lake Marcel and some of these other areas. Um, even some on the other side of the valley. There's Redmond Ridge people that regularly come down here and kind of consider this, their, their little downtown where they, we go out and shop. Um, even I think it's Forest Park out headed on the other side of the valley. Um, so I, you know, I don't want some kind of justification that our market isn't sufficient by just looking at kind of an arbitrary one mile from city hall. That's, so I would be supportive of something else.
Councilmember McHenry and then Bridniki?
Yeah, besides completely agreeing with Councilmember Lingle's points, uh, Councilmember Naplin's dead on on that one. I mean, I think we all know the unique topography of Duval and that um, you know, we're not just like a flat suburban area where we're in between multiple cities that all connect and it all blends together. I mean, you're right, up by Lake Marcel, people come to Duval all the time. They consider it their town too. So I think that's a very important consideration.
Councilmember Bridniki?
I know we're all tired. I'll make it brief. I'm going to be pretty straightforward here. I'm very disappointed in this whole situation. And I'm going to say that in all of my years, when it comes to commercial, they always have an excuse. We need commercial development here. I, I'm really not interested in the study. And their radius or anything, we have businesses all over this town that go all the way to Taylor's Ridge. People who want to have some commercial space. And I understand what may be behind all of that, but I think I'm disappointed that there was no marketing um, planning going out. They've had this, this space for a lo, for years. So my question is, you know, what, what extension are we talking about at this point? Because I'd like the shortest extension possible, like the shortest.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Mayor Portem Remington?
Thank you, Mary. As I'm too simple a person, they ask for an extension, but they're not getting an extension. You know, in, in the simple terms, they're asking to change the entire terms of what we're extending. You know, I, I'd be okay saying, look, COVID, you changed who owns it. You need a little more time, but now we're being asked to make all these changes. I deeply respect our planning commission, the efforts of staff to go through this. But for me personally, I, I just, so much of this, I just can't say yes to personally. Um, you know, yes, I, I'm willing to take a look at a short extension to kind of get them past whatever challenges they have. But all of these new things that they want to toss in there that we need to, to be a part of, you know? Um, I, I hardly see a one of them that I, I feel comfortable with personally. Um, you know, and I, and I feel bad because I, I like to support our business and our, our development and, and um, commercial, but this, this is. But this, this is a tough one for me personally.
Councilmember Schaefer, and then I, I do have something I'd like to say, maybe a little bit out of turn as well. Councilmember Schaefer?
So the extension date we're talking about is January fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, is, is it not? I just wanted to be clear, clear on that. And any other requests or suggestion from them, we are not abiding by. Is that also correct?
Do you want me to address that, Mayor?
Yes.
Or, okay, so they requested a five-year extension, and council made it clear almost a year ago that that, that wasn't satisfactory. And so we've been working towards what, you know, what timeline could that look like? Right now, we're, we are at January twenty twenty-three. Partially, we're also, you know, we have kind of a side issue as well, which is DFA has their barn parts and their barn on the parcel through a temporary use permit. That technically does expire in December of, of this year. One thing to note, though, is both our development agreement and our code, right or wrong, do allow ten years for them to complete the commercial development of that site, no matter what timeline you, you as a council agree to place on them for getting their commercial development started.
Mayor Pratim?
Director Thomas is at, so ten years, and it was approved in fifteen, so that's twenty twenty-five.
And my. It's, well, that ten-year period doesn't, did not start until final plat.
Which was?
In two thousand and nineteen.
So they have till twenty twenty-nine, obviously. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that the reason, sorry, I interrupted. I think the reason your policy or the policy has that ten years is because they're assuming a larger commercial development. So like, say, as an example, down where Toll Brothers is at, where they have multiple commercial lots, and they start to build them over a ten-year process, and the last one is completed at the ten-year. But unfortunately, your policy doesn't address the, the single commercial lot where you might only have one building.
So if council will indulge me for a moment, I just want to say that I, I'm really disappointed in this developer. And I feel strongly that if they had put as much effort into putting, moving forward with identifying viable commercial development as, as they have with putting pressure on our staff, our Planning Commission and our council to completely change the terms of an over twenty-year-old agreement, that we would have commercial going in right now. And so whatever terms that council wants to put forth and agree to, I fully support. Councilmember Bridniky and I both came on to council long after this deal was done. It's changed hands, and it has not been an easy group to work with on this. And I just hope that a decision is made and that we're able to stick to it as a city and finally hopefully provide some relief to our staff from the hours and hours and hours and hours that have been spent trying to work and negotiate only to have them come back and ask for more than they were ever provided in an original agreement. As the supervisor of our Community Development Director and Public Works Director, seeing what they have gone through the last few years is, is very difficult to watch, knowing that they don't have a choice. And so I do encourage council to make a strong decision and statement to send a loud, clear message that we're, we're done and we want their work done. So I'll just leave it at that, and, and probably not the most politically correct thing to say on the record tonight, but I'm, I would think we're all fed up. I'll just leave it at that. Councilmember Schaefer?
So can we make it a shorter date? So right now is January twenty twenty-three. Can we make it something less to send a stronger message to this company?
Yes, yes, you can.
Okay. I would be in support of doing exactly that. Them, giving them another year and a half before they even start talking to somebody, in my mind, is way too lenient. They have not acted in good faith. I think that's become clear through the long history we have from them. I've, I've read through all of the history of documentation that we have, have with them. I would actually prefer to send them a much stronger message, make that a shorter timeframe.
Mayor Pratim Remington?
I know we don't have our legal counsel with us, and I'm sure we've had plenty of discussion. But one of the key questions is anytime we make decisions that they're legal and meet the terms of contracts so that we don't get ourselves sideways. We want to obligate ourselves to due diligence and following through on our obligations. I know at one point, we had been accused of not upholding our end of the contract. I just want to, and if it's not appropriate here, we can do it with the attorney. But I just want to make sure that decisions that we're talking about are supported by legal staff and fall within the contract that we have signed.
Absolutely, Mayor Pratim. So if I may, I'd like to go out on a limb and make a suggestion. Is council willing to, would you be interested in appointing a point person from council to provide kind of the final answer and, and be willing to back what that council member works with to bring back a final document for decision?
Yes.
Could that be the Land Use Committee? I know that Land Use folks were even working on it, and I, I think it might be a more appropriate venue since they have more skin in the game. I almost want to say, what's the recommendation, and I'll go with it.
Yeah, and that's, that's basically what I'm, I'm trying to recommend. Ms. Thomas?
I feel like I have very clear direction. I have an email from the Land Use Committee. I've heard what council says, so I can have something edited by Thursday at the latest, and we can get that to our city attorney, and we can hold the Land Use Committee meeting early next week. I've, I've heard clear direction, and I have a good email that helps me put that together from Councilmember Lingle, plus what our other council members have stated. So I, I think it'll be a pretty, I think it'll be pretty easy to get that updated.
Councilmember Schaefer?
A question for Director Thomas. What, what, what is your clear direction, Director? I, I guess I'm not sure, what, is it to set a shorter date or use the same date in there?
So, okay, so there's, there's quite a bit of direction. So I have an email, I will forward that to you from the Land Use Committee, and that is what Councilmember Lingle stated as far as, and then also including the, what we call the capture rate and putting that at the perimeter and choosing probably three and five miles, because then that'll get us further out. I think you saw probably in the packet, we put, we actually put the maps in there, so we'll get those updated. And then the item that you had was, can we shorten the date? So yes, we can, but I need to go back through and do that exercise because we do have DFA as a partner on that parcel. So I can't, we can't set the date any earlier than the expiration of their permit.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody have any final comment on this this evening? Councilmember Lingle?
I just want to say thank you to all my colleagues and council member, I mean, Director Thomas and Director Public Works for considering my comments this evening. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you all. It's been a long haul with this one and a long meeting again tonight. So, and I think we have the clear direction Ms. Thomas needs. Ms. Wykoff?
Just before you adjourn the meeting, I just wanted to ask council about vacations for the summers. So I wanted to say it before you adjourned. So I, I know you were wrapping up the last item, sorry.
Yeah, so just quick request, if you have council vacations planned that are going to interfere with meetings, please email the clerk, preferably right after you get off this meeting so that she can make sure that we have quorums for the rest of the summer.
Thank you.
So with that, thank you all for a good meeting, lots of great conversation. And unless there are objections, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, everyone.